The time now is 4:02. I would like to, today is February 14, 2024. Happy Valentine's Day, by the way. I would like to start the study session right now. I ask for the roll call, please.
Mayor Wayne.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Councilwoman Manfan West.
I'm here.
Councilmember Manzo.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
I'm here.
Mayor, you have a call with Vice Mayor Ho absent.
Thank you very much. And now I'd like to, here I say that salute to the flag. Do we have to salute the flag for the study session? Normally for closed session, we don't have to do it.
We're going to do it later, but if you'd like to.
No, for the, for the open session, we are going to do it, right? So we don't have to do it now, right?
We don't need to do it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Madam Clark, do we have any, anyone sign up for oral communication today?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay, all right. If not, I would like to call for recess for the study session.
I think we're going to conduct it out here. It's going to be.
Oh, we conduct it out here too?
Yes.
If that's the case, I have to excuse myself. I just want to open the meeting and then let the council go ahead. And we don't have the vice mayor here today, but I have to run to church, so I will be back later. Yes, the vice mayor is not here right now, so why don't I designate councilmember Manzo, who is most senior here, to run the meeting for me instead. Thank you.
Okay, so now we have our advocacy overview and discussion on legislative priorities. We have, who do we have today?
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Corey Tockenin, Vice President with Towns and Public Affairs. I'm here with two of my colleagues, Anastasia Heaton and Simi Rehill, two of our grant writers on our team. And I would love to provide you with an overview of the services that we'll be providing for the city. And then would really like to take this opportunity to hear from each of you on your specific priorities, legislative and funding related, as we build out our strategic advocacy plan over the next several months. So I'm going to touch on, like I said, a high level overview, funding advocacy, state earmarks, federal earmarks, grant writing, legislative advocacy. We have all three services covered in our contract, so we have a really comprehensive approach to how we will be able to support the city of Westminster. At a very high level on our approach to funding advocacy is we have been working with your team. And obviously, we're here today to hear from council to craft a strategic funding plan. We've received the needs assessment that the city did back a couple of years ago. And we've been going through that, looking through projects and starting to match them up with upcoming funding opportunities. We're looking at all levels, local levels, foundation, private, state, federal, on the competitive grant side, also. Council, and we match it up with a grant application, then we will take on the burden of writing that application. And this was something we talked about during the council meeting, that our goal is to really take as much burden off of your staff as possible. Do the writing, dig into the budgets, draft that proposal, send it back to your team for final review, and then handle the submission and ensure that the application is submitted prior to the deadline. Following any grant application submission, there's also an advocacy effort that's done. We work with your state, local, state and federal elected officials to advocate on behalf of your applications. So we'll be working with them on letters of support, on making phone calls, reaching out to agency staff to really make sure that your applications are getting to the top of the pile. And then if there are any unsuccessful applications, we will conduct a debriefing with agency staff in partnership with your city staff to understand how we can improve our application looking ahead to the next round of funding. The majority of local, state and federal programs, as well as foundation programs, are on a reoccurring basis. So if we are unsuccessful one time, we want to make sure the next time we have all the feedback to improve our application and be successful that second time around. Focusing on state budget earmarks, this just provides a very high level summary of the success that we have had as a firm over the last four years in Sacramento. We are prepared to work with your state senators and your assembly member, Senator Nguyen, Assemblymember Taugh, to look at submitting projects for inclusion in the state budget process this year. The state budget process is, it's a little bit of a challenge this year. The state is facing anywhere from a $37 to a $68 billion deficit, depending on who you ask. The governor believes it's closer to 37. The legislative analyst office and Department of Finance believe it's closer to $68 billion. In the governor's January budget proposal, he was very aggressive about proposing numerous cuts across the state budget, including halting several current grant funding programs. However, last year we had a budget deficit as well. And we have been having conversations with members of the legislature about state budget earmarks. And what I mean by this is there's an example on this slide in front of you. The last several years, there have been line items included in the state budget for public agency and nonprofit projects. So what we would be looking for is something very similar to this, a dollar amount for the city of Westminster for a specific project. These are line items that are included in the state general fund. There is not a competitive grant application process that you have to go through to get this money. It is very much a political process, leveraging your elected officials and then the relationships that we bring to the table with state leadership, with the governor's office, to fight for this funding. We don't know right now if there will be earmarks included in the state budget. I am cautiously optimistic. It is an election year. Members do like to receive earmarks during elections years, so they have something to tout back to their districts. And it is a priority for the legislature. So this will be a big conversation between the legislature and the administration leading up to the July 1 deadline to pass a state budget, as they're both sort of bargaining on what is included and what is not. So as we look at opportunities for the city, this is, these are really kind of the guidelines to hit when we're thinking of state budget projects. We're looking at projects in the low millions. So I would say high six figures to highest range about 3 million is what we want to target. We also really want projects that have a regional benefit. The broader we can make the project, the more support we can bring to the project, the higher the likelihood of success in the state budget process. The next thing I would encourage is, is think like an elected official. You're all elected officials. What are the fun projects, the ones that, you know, get on the front page of the newspaper? The ones where we can have a ribbon cutting, a groundbreaking. Elected officials really want that press moment to be acknowledged for the work that they've done to bring this money back to the district. They're also really looking to fund the last piece of a project. So the state is very interested in being the final chunk of money to complete a project, to bring it to completion, which means that projects should be as shovel-ready as possible. Now saying that, it's really shovel-ready a year and a half from now, as we go through the state budget process. It takes time. We will not know if we receive the money until July 1 at the earliest. It could be as late as August. And then it takes time for the state agencies to hand out and process the state earmarks to distribute the money to the city. So we're looking at about, I would say, 12 to 18 months from now to actually receiving any state budget money that is secured this year. Next, I'm going to flip over to federal earmarks. It's a similar but different process. I should mention before I go into federal, on the state side, in addition to the criteria I just went through, really any project is eligible. So the other thing that we have been doing is reaching out to your elected officials to determine what are they passionate about, what are they looking to fund, what ideas do they have? Because ultimately, they have to be the ones to champion your project. But there are no restrictions as to type of project. It could be infrastructure. It can be programmatic. It can really run sort of the gamut of services that the city provides. The federal side is a little bit different. At the federal government, we are in our third year of the new federal earmarking process. And it's called community project funding, is the technical name of this process. There have been two years closed out, in fiscal year 2022 and fiscal year 2023. Fiscal year 2024 is still an open process. The federal government is still trying to pass a federal budget, even though their fiscal year ended in October. They're still fighting over it. And until that federal budget is passed, earmarks will not be finalized. Even with that timing, we are hearing that members are going to open their process for fiscal year '25 earmarks in the next 30 to 60 days. So we are starting to have conversations with your elected officials. Again, what projects are they looking for? How can we make sure that the city of Westminster is at the top of their lists? This is an example of a federal earmark. It looks very similar to the state side. You see the federal agency that it will go through, the project, the dollar amount. And then the difference, the main difference between the federal and state side is you actually see the names of the representatives that were successful in securing the funding. So looking at the federal appropriations process, as I mentioned, the time is really now to identify what projects are a good fit for the city of Westminster. The federal process does have stricter criteria. So there are very specific pots of funding that you must fit within and criteria that you must meet within those pots of funding in order to be eligible. So we've been working with staff to share that information and then again, start to match up your projects with where they might fit within the federal process. Overall, similar priorities. They're looking to fund the last piece of a project, not the first piece. Projects, they're looking, projects cannot be reimbursed, so it needs to be a project forward, looking forward, not money that has already been spent by the city. And then again, they're looking for shovel-ready, but as I mentioned, the federal, the federal government does not have a budget in place for last year now. So again, we're looking about 18 months, if not 24 months, from the time we submit to when the city would actually receive that funding. So it does present some challenges as we're looking at projects and trying to define shovel-ready two years from now. The federal level, we also have two similar but different processes that run on the senate side with Senator Padilla and Senator Butler, and then on the house side with Congresswoman Steele. The Congresswoman is the best opportunity for the city to receive funding. She will likely receive about 15 requests from her district. The city was successful in having a project selected by her last year. And we will obviously be looking to have another project selected by her this year. Now I want to briefly talk about the grant writing side. This again gives just a high level overview of the success that we've had as a firm as it relates to competitive grant writing. So these are all competitive grant programs from local, state, federal level that we have written the grants for on behalf of our clients. This slide provides just a snapshot, a very high level snapshot of some upcoming grant opportunities that we already have on our radar that will fit priority projects for the city. And this gives you a little bit of a sense of what we're going to continue to build out as we put together our strategic advocacy and funding plan. So again, just a preliminary snapshot, but as we continue to receive feedback from staff, from council, as we hear your priorities, your projects that are your priorities, we will build this out and continue to match projects to upcoming grant programs. And then lastly, I want to end on the legislative advocacy side. So similar to our funding approach, as we learned, the legislative priorities for the city, I can, I can guess local control is probably going to be the first one, making sure that the city can make the decisions that you want to make, and Sacramento does not make them for you. As we continue to build out priorities in addition to that, we will be working with your team to again, put together a legislative strategy and then advocate on your behalf in Sacramento and in Washington DC. This is a slide that shows a snapshot of some anticipated legislation that we're, we're already working on and engaging on in Sacramento. There, the bill introduction deadline in Sacramento is this Friday. As of today, there have been about 1,100 bills introduced thus far that are new bills for this legislative session. And I would expect to see at least 500 or 600 more between now and Friday. So we're expecting a total universe of probably around 2,000 bills, because we still have bills from last year that are rolling over to this year that we will be working on and targeting for the city based on your priorities, bringing recommendations on supporting legislation, opposing legislation, and where we want to engage to make any changes or amendments in legislation. There's been a lot of conversation around fentanyl prevention, RENA allocations, homelessness, really issues that I'm sure you've heard about over the last several years. There are several statewide ballot initiatives that will be on the ballot in November that we are happy to, to work with the city on, to engage with if there are any positions that the city wants to take to message out to your residents so that they are aware of what will be on their ballot in November and can make informed decisions about how they would like to vote for these initiatives. And there are also several statewide bonds that are being discussed in Sacramento. It is very typical when the state budget is under considerable pressure that the legislature turns to statewide bonds as mechanisms for funding projects, because ultimately, they will also have to be approved by the voters on a November ballot. And then lastly, this provides sort of an overview on the advocacy work. We'll continue to have regular check-in meetings with city staff. We will provide regular reports and updates on priority issues that are being discussed at the state and federal government. We would be excited to plan an advocacy trip to Sacramento and Washington DC, if that's of interest to the council. We would be happy to work with you on the right times to go to fully maximize the opportunity and not get sort of shoved along with, you know, a large association or something that may be going out there. And then also to continue to develop relationships with your legislative delegation, but also leadership in the ones, you know, just outside of the city of Westminster but are still playing a critical role in making policy decisions in both Sacramento and Washington DC. And then with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. But as I said, I'd also love sort of your comments, your thoughts, your priorities. We really want to capture everything from you as we're building out this strategic plan on the funding side and the legislative side, so we can make sure it's comprehensive, it's clear, and we're all marching to the same drum as we look ahead.
Any questions? Thank you, Corinne. Do you have any questions?
I'll go. Thanks. Thank you for your report. Thank you for being here with us today. I hear, oh, first, the first question I have is how often, you mentioned you'll be meeting with staff regularly. with staff regularly, but do you have kind of a estimate of like how often that would, that would be, or what that would look like?
Really, as often as they'd like. We've had one in-person meeting at City Hall. We've had several phone conversations. We've exchanged emails multiple times a week. So it, so far, it has been very constant and consistent, and frankly, that's what we prefer. The more information we have, the more conversations we're having, the more effective that we can be.
Okay. And then, I mean, I heard, right now, as far as grant opportunities, it's a, that water is kind of one of the earmarks that are pretty popular right now, that at the state level, they're, that's what they're looking at. It's easier to obtain one of those grant funds for water, water-related projects. Is that, have you heard about that?
I would say at the federal level, actually. There is an account specifically for water projects, water wells, groundwater contamination, cleanup. We received $2 million last year for City of Buena Park through Congresswoman Steele through that account. It's a, it's a nice one because it's outside, there's one account at the federal level that sort of encompasses general city projects. It's through the HUD Economic Development Account. So anything under economic development, you can put there. The water one is a little bit more specialized, so cities have been successful going through that program. At the state level, I, I have seen water projects funded, but it, the type of project really doesn't matter. It's the effectiveness of your member. Party matters in Sacramento. So you are frankly at a little bit of a disadvantage with having two Republicans. But both of your members, Assemblymember Ta and Senator Nguyen, have been successful in bringing back money for their district. So it's really working with them to find, to make sure that our project is their top priority project. And then it's working through the, the challenges of a deficit year in the, in the state budget. So water projects have absolutely been successful, but I, I would say for the federal side, it makes more sense to focus there. The state side, there's a little bit more leeway on the type of project.
Yeah, I mean, and that kind of ties into, I know, I know we're, I mean, we've had a lot of rain, but I mean, it's supposedly, we're still in a drought. I mean, the, the problem with the rain that we're having, we're struggling to capture that rain. And we have a lot of, you know, a lot of, I don't think we do a good job as far as conserving water, as far as, we have a lot of, we, a lot of parks that we're spending a lot of water resources. There's a lot of other communities where they're changing a little bit of the landscape at their parks and maybe some of their medians to be more drought, drought-friendly. So I mean, that's kind of all too tied in with water. I know we spend quite a bit of water, watering our medians, and other cities I see, they're, they kind of got away from that, and they're using more, you know, dry riverbed rocks, things like that to conserve water. And then in green spaces, too. I mean, I think if I was, say, I think a guest I'd say, well, how, what is the best opportunity for us? Go after our best opportunity to, to be able to, to be able to generate, get those awarded, the grants, you know, instead of reaching, I know, I'm sure we have some dream, dreams out there, but let's, what can we really, what is really attainable, what is reachable? That's where I would say that I would want to start with that. And, and, and like you mentioned, some of those projects that, that looks, I guess, in better terms, not better terms, but sexy to, sexy to our, our elected officials at the state and federal levels, you know? And they kind of concentrate on that, so we're, can, can get some, score some points and get some of those projects to our community. So, so I'm, I'm sure we'll, in time, as we're working, that we will come up with other ideas and as we're learning as far as what we, what you do, how you can help us. So it'll be an ongoing conversation. So, thank you.
Ms. Vice Mayor, can I ask a question? Okay. Thank you so much for being here today to elaborate on what you guys do and, you know, targeting for funding. I really appreciate that. Now, what I'm very interested in is, you know, of course, homelessness and theft prevention. I mean, with federal and state, we can get both of those funding. Is that correct?
Funding for homelessness and theft prevention? There are competitive grants for both categories. There was a, a big retail theft grant through the Board of State Community Corrections last year on theft prevention. Homelessness, it really, there are several opportunities. It depends on exactly what you're looking for. And different opportunities are open to different, different eligible entities. Some are focused on community-based organizations and nonprofits. Some are open to public agencies. Some are only open to counties. Some are also open to cities. So it really depends on what the, the project is that you have in mind. Is it housing? Is it programs? Is it services? And then that will help us determine what the right fit is from a grant standpoint.
Okay. So with homelessness, we can always target the services. Is that correct? Services would be great, and then also prevention. And then for theft, and I guess it comes hand in hand with fentanyl overdose as well, crimes, right? Crimes and drugs abuse. Fentanyl is on the rise, as we all know, at the southern border. If there's, you know, prevention, way of education, you know, where we can help our law enforcement as well, I think that's great. And then giving the power back to the people to take charge, you know, of preventing fentanyl on their street and in their neighborhood, I think that would be great. Also, Proposition 47 is really high on the list for us, as this year I was appointed by the Presidential of Cal City to partner up with, you know, for public safety, to, to fight back and to reform Prop 47. So that's high on the list. If there's a way that you can help us craft in the city here to, you know, make sure that we, you know, reform Prop 47, that'd be great.
So I actually have a memo, I haven't sent this to staff yet because we just finished it, I'll just hand it to you, please, chief. On Prop 47, there's 11 bills so far that have been, 14 bills so far that have been introduced on the topic. So we'll start combing through them and work with your team and, and start recommending positions based on exactly what you just said.
That's perfect. And then last, I would love for our council here and mayor to take a trip to Sacramento and D.C. When is the best time to advocate with our legislature on different bills, so that way we can be heard locally here and bring local control back? I think that's key, if you can help us with that.
Sure.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Can I, can I have another question?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. On, to chime in on, on what Councilmember West was speaking about homelessness, you know, I think the Home Key Project that's out there, I know that we attempted to, in a, a while back ago, we attempted to partner up with the agency that, that would help with that version, but it seems like we're at a disadvantage when it comes to getting that up, like Home Key Funds, because, you know, unless we have a partner, and then a qualified partner, you know, to be able to put on a grant that looks appealing for us to receive that, like we're at a strong disadvantage in that, that aspect, because we don't own the motel.
Right.
You know, how do, how do we go, how, what, how can you do, or what can we do to help us in that situation? I know in the past, there was some properties that were for sale and then backed out, but we haven't been able to find a good partner for that, for the, something like that, a Home Key, like Stanton, they're doing a good job. I think they have, they have three Home Key projects, two complete, one be complete here this year. I mean, we have some very motels that are very, you know, disarray and not looking so good that we were at one time thinking of purchasing when we had some funding, but we don't, we're not there. There's no way for us to be able to compete and, and to purchase something like that. So if there's any way that, something like that, can, we can find a way to give us some sort of advantage or help in that aspect?
You know, on what you were touching on homelessness and the Motel 6, I was also wondering if we can incentivize, because we do have two Motel 6, which attract a lot of homelessness into the area and the value of the homes, the home buyers are concerned regarding that. So what I was thinking is incentivize people to kind of buy that out to house our homeless veteran or, or veteran general for, you know, a voucher system or whatever it is it might be. If you can look out for that, I think our veteran deserve to be taken care of. Also on that, the other thing, too, what was it here? What was it? It just escaped me.
If I could just comment on that, maybe while you, you catch your thoughts, if Proposition 1 passes on the March ballot, there is funding in there specifically for homeless veterans and housing opportunities for them. And there are significant pots in there for funding for cities as well as counties. So there could be some good opportunities if Proposition 1 passes for these projects.
Okay, that's perfect. If you could come back to me for the last question, Vice Mayor?
Yes. So District 4.
Oh, I have one more, my question.
Okay. So I, I'd like to add to the comments earlier. So I was thinking that a lot of funding that comes from, you know, federal funding for homelessness and to fight drugs like fentanyl, et cetera, have all come to county, correct? And, and I am so unhappy with that, because I'm just wondering, I know, I'll have a conversation with Mayor Chauver from Stanton to see where the heck is he getting his money from. And so I know that we're squeezing our money, you know, we use our FEMA dollars, you know, that should be for COVID, but instead, we're dedicating that to building our, you know, tri-city venture for the homeless. So while I would love to do more, but where's the money coming from? So, you know, so I'm thinking like, if you could look out and something that we, you could like deliver directly to us and not via county or the state, we're, we're hurting. We know that people expect us to do something, but we're doing the best we can without dipping into our general funds, you know, that we, we should be using that money, general fund dollars, to serve our constituents.
You're right. A lot of that homeless mental health money has gone through the Continuum of Care, which run through the county process. Proposition 1 actually has a large pot that will go to, directly to counties or, or cities. It will take it out of the continuum of care process and, and be more direct to counties and cities. There will be a regulatory process, if Proposition 1 passes, to further define exactly what that means and what that looks like in practice. So we can engage through that regulatory process to stress it needs to be available to cities directly.
Yes.
For those, those funding opportunities.
And that would be the first. We'd love to have it. And so, as you know, this is the opportunity for all of us on the council to realize that, I remember, I don't know if I'm at liberty to say this, but we were talking about the money, the settlement from the fentanyl case. Is it okay to mention that we decided to, to, you know?
With opioids, with respect to opioids?
Yeah, opioids in general.
Yeah, that's a process that's working its way.
But what I'm just saying is that I think we had a, there was a decision to be made that we either have the money and keep the money and come up with a program to help our, you know, addicts, or kind of like entrust that money, you know, to the county, to county, right?
I thought we spoke about paying for the, some of the services at the navigation center through that opioid money.
No.
There's a.
There was some.
There's settlements, there's a number of different settlements with different companies, and so there's different terms on each one. But yes, there are funds that could potentially come to the city to run a program.
Program, yeah.
That would be focused on opioid.
Through the.
Eliminating opioid type abuses. There's a lot of requirements to that sort of thing, but, so some cities are elected to give it to the county, but some cities also have created programs that they could use.
Yeah, right now, I just don't feel so good about handing it over another, another fund to the county. So it's like our homeless funds gone, gone to the county, and then we have to come up with more funds and figure out where to get money to do what the people want us to do is to clean up and abate homelessness. And so this is just a reminder that, you know, here we are asking for more money or for, for some help. And it, it, it would be best, in our best interest, to be able to kind of like make that choice. But I think now that we're kind of like, at least four or five years into seeing what county and how they operate and looking at the result or lack of, we'd be better, I think we'd better be better off in some of these cases to, to, you know, operate something on our own, just to make sure that we're kind of in charge of our own destiny and not hand it over or just, you know, be decided upon by, by county. Yeah. So that's just another thought.
I, I have one last question.
Yes, go ahead.
I remember now. Okay, so do we have funding, either state or federal, to beautify our city? Because as we know, Westminster has great ground opportunity for, you know, moving our city forward, to beautify our city. We have great opportunity for that, to incentivize more business into our city as well as development and developers. Do you guys have funding, either, I don't know, state or federal, that can help beautify our city? More planters, you know, beautify the buildings, beautify, I mean, you know, more stuff, just because if we, if you think about it, young family like us, we're going down to Newport Beach, Laguna Beach. Why do we go shop down there when we can shop here and bring money generally into the city of Westminster? So beautifying our city will incentivize business to come in, and then that give tax dollars into the city, but also developing. And then plus, the market, the value of the homes will rise as well, increase the value. So if there's funding for that, if you can look out for that, I think that would be a great plus for the city of Westminster.
Absolutely. And the, the angle you're taking on it is the right angle, because the, I think the main opportunity is the Federal Economic Development Administration and linking it all to economic development in your, your main downtown business areas and then expanding and building that out. So we can put together some thoughts around starting to explore those opportunities, exactly what they would come in and fund with that economic development connection.
That'd be perfect. Go ahead, if you.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
If I may expand on that thought, you, you can finish, finish your thought.
No, no, it's, I'm fine, I'm good.
So beautifying our city, I think when, when, you know, that's, to me, is if we can narrow it down or just kind of be, you know, suggestive a few ways. So one would be, you know, if you have any, you know, greenery, green programs, like build more plants, like, I mean, plant more trees, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, when you say beautify, it could, a lot come to mind, like, you know, changing the facade or upgrading their, the buildings, et cetera, and, and, you know, look out for areas with light and concentrate and make it look better, et cetera. So I'm just thinking like, you know, if we're talking about federal level, I'm sure they have like green, encourage us to go green and plant more trees, make our air better, et cetera, et cetera. And anything, anything that could beautify our city, not just planting, but any, any amount of money regarding construction, because, you know, they're asking us to build more housing and get rid of, or, you know, help reduce, shall I say, homelessness, and that's all kind of, all interconnected. And so that, that, you know, I just want to expand that thought.
Yeah, I mean, those are all, there's, you know, I'm sure that some of the, a lot of the subjects you can expand, like some of the items that Vice Mayor is mentioning, I mean, there can be climate, climate change related. There's, there's, I'm sure there's other grant opportunities for, to fight climate change. One way to fight climate change is plant more trees. Get rid of concrete. You know, concrete makes our planet hotter. So if there's areas where we can, you know, bring something like that, that, you know, if there's those opportunities out there, you know?
Yeah, the California Natural Resources Agency has an urban greening program to do exactly what you're saying. Plant trees, increase shade, reduce heat. There's also some opportunities around complete streets. There's also some opportunities around complete streets, which this could be a component of is the beautification around it. Caltrans had a, I just had it and I blinked on it. Clean California Grant Program that was focused on specific areas of cities and cleaning it up and beautifying it to eliminate blight in those areas. So there could be a couple of different opportunities over the coming, you know, several months or year that could fit exactly what you're talking about.
If I could add to what Cory said, three sources she just utilized, mentioned are, we currently are successful in obtaining funds from those three sources.
Yeah, some of those are like you just mentioned, clean streets, all that we've spoken ad hoc. And I have spoken about, like, how do you improve a neighborhood by, like, you can add and change streets by doing ball bouts, nowadays that's pretty popular. And you're creating more green area at the same time. You're creating access for bicycling for pedestrians at the same time while you're beautifying, but you're also creating, you know, more to it, more layers to it. There's more you can capture and all those, you know, some of those, some of those are out there. We just recently completed and opened up our trail that, that brought a lot of green and open space and to get people active again, that, those type of projects were, are, I would consider sexy to some elected official up in Sacramento or Washington, those type of things. And it's accomplishing beautification, but it's also doing other aspects as well. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have one more. You know how many different city, they have different hotels to incentivize more tax dollars into the city? Do we have some kind of funding to bring like higher-end hotels into our city? Like the Hilton, the Marriott, you know? That would be nice.
Yeah, I believe we have a hotel coming in the Westminster Mall area, correct? So we've got one being built on, what is that called? It might be the Wyndham by the Buckham family. Bolsa Row, yeah. And so it would be nice. It would be nice.
Also, you know, do you guys have, I guess, do you guys incentivize more dealership into our city? Like Jeep, Tesla, or, you know, something like that?
I'm not aware of any grant funding opportunities that would provide that. Typically, government grant programs are focused on government projects, not subsidizing or helping a private company, even though there would be a direct economic development to the city. They're more focused on like city infrastructure, services types of projects. But something we can certainly keep an eye out for.
Okay, that'd be great.
What do you think the type of funding we could get to improve, you'd say the West Side? I mean, we want to bring Trader Joe's, but I, you know, into, to replace one that, when they closed down years ago, right on Westminster and.
Ranchito.
Ranchito. Yeah, so let's say that area is just, and then now you've got big lots out of business as well. So it looks so dead. So is there any grant funding or possible grant funding for like an area, a zone like that?
The Economic Development Administration has great programs. And I would recommend we set up a call with their regional staff and explain the vision to them. Show them the area, explain what we're trying to do if that hasn't already been done and kind of work with them hand in hand on building out what that could look like. They have a lot of different programs for a lot of different purposes, but I think it would help for them to see the full vision and then we can start to piecemeal together what a funding strategy would be to accomplish that.
Cory's been working with City Manager's Office now. One of the things that we share and something that we see when we go to other parts of Southern California, I know Councilmember Mansa travels a lot as part of work and we've talked about this, is these corridor streetscape improvements that are literally going from property line on one side of the street to property line on the other side of the street. You're seeing that all over Southern California. Our approach and with the funding sources that we have in Orange County, locally, we've gone after improvements, but there are median improvements, intersection improvements. And we're starting to see a lot more streetscape overhauls. And that's something that really interests the city, so we're working with Cory on that.
And that's something too that has been successful at the federal earmark level. We did one in South El Monte, the Merced Avenue Greenway, that kind of looked at that holistic street and adding the beautification and the complete streets elements. So those types of projects could be a really good fit for state, but specifically for federal earmarks.
So if there's an opportunity for a grant, do you like, so since I don't know your job and how you, is there a list of things that are coming up that they, they're proposing that you review? Pretty much, you know, I just want to let you know that we, we want all of those grants. So if you have a problem coming up with like how to fit us into those grants, or call one of us. I mean, you know, we, we'd have to, you know, we will be very creative on how to, you know, qualify for those grants. If we could be of help, please let us know.
We have hundreds of grants in our arsenal that we are pulling out now and starting to fit with city priority projects. The slide in front of you is a start of what that looks like, looking at the documents that staff has provided us and starting to create that funding strategy. Every grant has different requirements within it, match requirements, environmental has to be done. You know, it needs to be at this part, this stage of the process in order to be competitive. So there's a lot of factors that we will also talk about with your team to find the ones that are the best fit and the most competitive. Demographics play a huge, a huge scoring piece in both the state and federal level. The federal government has a justice, a forty for forty, justice forty for forty initiative, where they want to make sure that forty percent of all federal funding is going to projects that are forty percent below the poverty line. The state of California is taking that one step further. And the majority of federal funding that is cycling through the state, the state is saying one hundred percent of this funding needs to go to disadvantaged communities. So the surrounding areas of these projects and the demographics and the metrics will also play a big role in determining exactly what's competitive. So we're taking all those metrics and all these different programs and will create a strategic funding plan, looking out over the next twelve to eighteen months about which programs would be the best fit for the city to start to go after.
Question, I know we've spoken about this and some of the grants, the grants that we have been able to receive over the years and Adolfo, he's our grant champion in our city, you know, he's bought it quite a bit. A lot of those had a matching dollar component on it. Would you say that's pretty, an overall, that's the, that's general consensus that most grants opportunities have a matching component?
Yes, the majority of grants have a matching component. If you are severely disadvantaged, there are typically opportunities to reduce or waive it. But the majority of these will have matching requirements.
So, I mean, that's, that's for us to keep in mind that, you know, as a council, we got to make sure we do our part to be able to put us in a position to be able to get some of the grants awarded to us and make sure that we have the resources available to make sure we do that. Sometimes, not to keep expanding on the topic, but sometimes we shy away from certain things, but we need to, it's not about us, it's about the community and think about the big picture. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. One other thing that I, that I will add to what Cory said, which is important and has really been the secret to a lot of our success is outreach and, and community outreach. The elected officials, we hear you loud and clear, staff is on board. Obviously Cory's here because she's an expert at helping us achieve these goals. But when we're telling our story to the feds, it has to be more than just the three of us think it's a good idea. We have to have engagement. We have to have people at parks putting pins on a board, collaborating. So I know the City Manager is looking forward to additional community outreach in the form of events to gather information and support, but those interactions and capturing that in photography and being able to include that as part of the narrative is why we've gotten a lot of the grants that we've gotten over the years. So we can't lose track of that.
I would echo that. There are several of these grant programs where up to twenty percent of the scoring is based on your community outreach. And there are specific criteria of number of meetings they want to see, different languages, they want the meetings held in. So it is incredibly important to hit those metrics and even exceed them, if possible, in order to be competitive.
Well, then I guess we are going to have these outreach a lot more and because if that's how we are being scored, then that's a must. That's a must. And I can totally understand why, because we're really doing it for the people. And so if you're, you know, you got to be inclusive. And so on a different note, going back to when you mentioned like demographics. So what kind of demographics do they want to, like, what kind of demographics would earn these grants?
So different grants have different tools that they use. There's a number of them and the federal government has different tools that they use that take into account different factors, income levels, air quality, you know, school statistics, free and reduced lunches, and they sort of aggregate all of this data. And you put in the address of the project location and then it spits out a number. And that will tell you where you score on their scale of being disadvantaged. So it's hard to tell you exactly what's needed, but once we have projects and sites, we can run those sites through the tools and say, okay, this is a disadvantaged area. This is not. Do we have projects in this community that would be a better fit than looking over here in this community?
I see.
Do you guys, Cory, do you guys have grant, either state or federal, for redeveloping or rebuilding parks to make it more of like, you know, a jungle gym for kids? Because in my district, there's, you know, older kids, high school kids, middle school kids, they're like, oh, the playground's like baby play, right? And they want something more of like a jungle gym or a ninja course or something like that. Do you guys have state funding or federal funding for that? Do you guys, have you seen in the past?
Yes, so parks projects have typically been funded through parks bonds. Proposition 68, which I believe was in 2018, was the last parks bond that really infused millions of dollars into park projects in the state of California, the statewide parks program. There were a number of them. The legislature is currently debating a climate bond, which is also a parks bond. So the, the bond language right now includes additional infusions into those existing parks programs. Parks programs are also a very good fit for earmarks. The community loves them, you know, they're, they're great projects. So if there are certain, I would say the rehabilitation of playgrounds is not as strong as a new playground, a new park. That's typically what the, the state and federal government prefer, is to create new parks, new open space, new recreation areas. But there, there have been several opportunities, there will continue to be several opportunities to create new parks, to add to new parks, expand new parks. It's also one where if there is an opportunity for partnerships with school districts and there's joint use projects, those have been very well received through competitive grants in the past. So tapping into any partners that the city has on the, the public side or the nonprofit side is very helpful in those parks grants. And another one where the community outreach is very, very important. They really want to see, they being the state and federal government, that the community helped design the park. They played a role in what the features are, you know, the ninja warrior course, the, the lighting to have a skate park, whatever it is. They really want the community weighing in on those amenities.
Okay.
So Cory, so on that note, I just want to say that, you know, there's a new park coming, right? I mean, that's, are you, do our staff, do you inform Cory of like, I know we looked at Westminster Mall area, there's a park coming and that would be considered a new park. So, and if we expand any park, then we have to talk to Cory and give her an update?
Like in our area, Cory, District 1, we have already park area, but it can be redeveloped, it can be expanded, because I mean, like for example, the Bosa Chica Park, you know, we have tons of green area that is empty. So maybe we can build like a ninja course or something back there, you know what I mean? Or even like a skateboard, skateboard area for older kids and younger kids as well, where they can do scooter around. Yeah.
Anybody else?
No?
No.
So my part, yeah, I just want to thank you.
We're satisfied.
Thank you.
How often are these updates or study sessions that you expect in the future? How often will we have these sessions?
How often would you like me?
Well, I mean, I appreciate the opportunity to.
I think it would be helpful if we came back with the plan. Right, once we put together the strategic plan and we have identified projects and grants, you know, and we kind of have that looking ahead for the next twelve months. I'm happy to come back and share that with council.
Yes, please.
For you to weigh in on.
I think we'd like that.
Would you guys, Cory, would you be able to kind of diagnose which area of funding that we would be able to receive as a city within the next month? Or do you think within two months?
As far as your level of competitiveness or as far as kind of the matching?
The matching and.
Yeah.
Qualification, stuff like that, within a month or two?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that'd be great.
Great, thank you.
Of course.
So what is?
What is?
Next.
A journey.
Really?
Yeah.
So, all right, so I will adjourn our study session and.
It's at four fifty-seven, you're adjourned.
Four fifty-seven, four fifty, thank you very much.
Thank you, Cory and your team.
Thank you, Cory. We'll see you next time.
Nice, this is amazing.
It is Wednesday, February 14, 2024, at 5:30. I would like to start with the closed session meeting. Meeting called to order, so please, Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll call?
Mayor Wen.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Ho.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Fan West.
I'm here.
Councilmember Montzo.
Here.
And Councilmember Wen.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum with all members present.
Thank you very much. And do we have anyone sign up for a closed session? Over communication, please.
We have no requests.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, may I ask, may I ask the City Clerk to go ahead and convince the item that we are going to talk in this closed session?
So the City Council recessed to a closed session for the following purpose: Conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code section 54956.9D4, initiation of litigation, case name "City of Grants Pass v. Gloria Johnson, United States Supreme Court," case number 23-175.
Thank you. We have only one item for closed session, so at this time, I'd like to recess for closed session.[199.44]
It is Wednesday, February 14, 2024, at 5:30. I would like to start with the closed session meeting. Meeting called to order, so please, Madam Clerk, can you, would you please take the roll call?
Mayor Wen.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Ho.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Fan West.
I'm here.
Councilmember Montzo.
Here.
And Councilmember Wen.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum with all members present.
Thank you very much, and do we have anyone sign up for a closed session? Over communication, please.
We have no requests.
Okay, thank you. So, at this time, may I ask, may I ask the City Clerk to go ahead and convince the item that we are going to talk in this closed session?
So, the City Council recessed to a closed session for the following purpose: Conference with legal counsel pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9D4, initiation of litigation. Case name: City of Grants Pass v. Gloria Johnson, United States Supreme Court, Case Number 23-175.
Thank you. We have only one item for closed session, so at this time, I'd like to recess for closed session.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to the City Council meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 14, 2024. Happy Valentine's to everyone. I would like to reconvene the City Council Successor Agency to the Westminster Redevelopment Agency meeting, meeting called to order. So at this point, may I ask the City Clerk to take a roll call, please?
Mayor Nguyen.
I am here.
Vice Mayor Ho.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Fan West.
I'm here.
Councilmember Monzo.
I'm here.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
I'm here.
Mayor, you have a call with all members present.
Thank you very much. Salute to the flag. Today is going to be Councilmember Manzo and invocation by Vice Mayor Ho. Please stand.
Yeah, please stand. Please join me.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we ask for guidance and direction as matters of importance are discussed this evening. May the decisions made here to the benefit of all citizens of Westminster, our community. Amen.
Amen.
Thanks to Councilmember Manzo and Vice Mayor Ho for salute to the flag and invocation. Next is the City Attorney. Call session report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Earlier in the year, the Council had voted to participate in a seeking of writ of certiorari before the U.S. Supreme Court in the case of Grants Pass versus Gloria Johnson, case number 23-175. And although so few cases are granted certiorari, in this case, it was granted. And so the Supreme Court will be hearing this issue probably in the summer. And the Council voted on a motion made by Councilmember Monzo, seconded by Vice Mayor Ho, approved 5-0, to participate in an amicus brief that will be filed before the U.S. Supreme Court related to the Grants Pass versus Gloria Johnson case. Nothing further to report.
Thank you. Next is export communications. Do we have any from the Council? Seeing none, hearing none, so moving on to City Clerk's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As a reminder, we did have a late communications go out for an addition to special presentations to be added as item B. An additional, we do have an election coming up in the city on March 5. The Orange County ROV is starting to send out voter information guides and ballots. Some important dates for our residents to keep in mind. If your vote-by-mail ballot began to mail back on February 5, due to AV37, all active registered voters will receive a vote-by-mail ballot. Questions on your vote-by-mail ballots, please make sure to reach out to the Orange County ROV. Additionally, we do have some ballot drop boxes here located in the city of Westminster. We have four specifically. One at Tony Lamb Park, Bolsa Chica Park, Korean Marty's Catholic Center, and West County Professional Medical Center. If you have any questions on the upcoming election, please make sure to reach out to the Orange County ROV. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is City Manager's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council, and everyone watching today. Happy Valentine's Day. So our police department, always busy at work, as part of the Office of Traffic Safety Grant this past Sunday, our WPD officers conducted an operation focusing on primary collision factors related to the causes of injury and fatality traffic accidents. This operation was conducted in areas of the city where those traffic collisions occur most frequently, based on statistical data. This was conducted by two of our traffic officers. A total of 20 traffic stops were made, 18 citations issued, and two warnings were given by these two officers. And all costs of this operation were covered by this grant. So please remember to drive responsibly for the safety of those on the roadways. Next, our senior center, of course, can't have an announcement without another party. They are selling tickets for their upcoming St. Patrick's Day luncheon. So please join the senior center for a three-course traditional Irish meal on Wednesday, March 13, from 11:30 a.m. to 1 p.m. Tickets are only $5 each, and seating is limited. So to purchase tickets, please visit the senior center or call 714-895-2878. And again, our senior center events are always very popular. So if you are a senior and not yet a member, definitely give them a call to see how you can take advantage of their wonderful services. Spring is approaching, so please mark your calendars for March 23rd and 30th. Easter is early this year, and so with Easter comes our bunny hop pop-up events. These are super popular, which we come out to some of our local parks, and the Easter bunny will be there for photo opportunities, and there's also an Easter egg hunt. So the Easter bunny will be hopping to a park near you, and more details to come. And last, this past Saturday, we held our annual TEP parade in the heart of Little Saigon. It was successful, well-attended, not a cloud in the sky, so we escaped that storm that we were kind of worried about earlier in the week. We had about 86 entries participating this year, and that's up from the 65 that we had last year. So of course, we want to thank the City Council for your confidence in staff to keep continuing this tradition in our city. And of course, our ad hoc committee, Councilwoman Fan West and Mayor Nguyen, for your assistance and guidance in the planning process as well. And of course, this could not be made possible without our staff. So big kudos to our community's services and recreation department. They managed and planned the event. Public Works assisted with operations and logistics. And our police department provided public safety, along with other outside agencies and the police explorers from our department, as well as other outside agencies. Of course, all of our city departments were present at the event as well, with OCFA, because an event like this takes a lot of manpower, and so we were really proud to have a lot of our employees out, you know, wearing their yellow t-shirts and helping everyone out, you know, as best as they could to provide a great experience. Just want to give an extra thank you to Midway City Sanitary District for providing trash services for the event and actual physical trash cans to make sure that we had a clean event and, you know, with as little litter as possible. And of course, our title sponsor, Westminster School District, for obviously providing a significant amount of funding to help us with this event, and the Westminster Community Foundation as well. So a lot of people to thank for this event, and we'll be providing, you know, as soon as we get more information and our numbers coming in, a full report to the City Council as far as the accounting and, you know, participants and feedback, et cetera, so we can make next years and subsequent years bigger and better. So thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. There's no doubt that there are a lot of effort and dedication that staff have to put in over the weekend, and I appreciate for every effort that you put in. So thank you, thank you very much. Next is a special presentation. We do have a couple of them, but at this point here, we haven't seen the rap from New Vivid News, but I'll go ahead and read that, and then we'll present them anyway. But first, we have recognition of Westminster Football Club. This club was created over a year ago and represent the city while playing in the Santana League. The players are residents of the city of Westminster and are celebrating their first championship win after only playing two seasons together. You can see they are having the cup with them today. But before we present you with the certificate of recognition, may I ask Councilmember Manzo, go ahead and have a few words for this.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just wanted to really highlight our community members here in the city of Westminster that not only are representing our city, but they carry the name of our city on their team. The name of the team is Westminster Football Club, and each and every one of them is a resident of the city. And I just want to congratulate them, highlight their victory, because they're still champions until the championship is taken away. So make sure you play hard this next season to make sure that you stay champions and keep representing the city of Westminster with the championship spirit. So thank you very much and congratulations.
Next is recognition of New Vivid News. New Vivid News is the first Vietnamese daily news in the United States. It was established on December 15, 1978, in San Diego, California, and now has a main office that resides in Little Saigon, especially in the city of Westminster. New Vivid News hosted their new year and 45th anniversary celebration last Sunday, February 11, and we would like to recognize them for their 45th anniversary celebration. I know that we all invited, the Council all invited, but we were busy during those days, and I believe there was only Vice Mayor Ho attended the event. But I called them, apologized that we couldn't attend the event, but I asked them if they can come today so we can present them, the whole Council can present them the appreciation. They said yes, but I haven't seen them right now. So at this point here, I would like to ask the Councilmember to join me at the podium, and also I would like to ask the football club to come up so that we can present you the certificate of recognition and congratulate you. So once again, on behalf of the City Council and City staff, I would like to present you with the certificate of recognition, Westminster Football Club for their exemplary play and victory in the league championship in the United Latin Soccer League 2023 Season Division M. And this is signed on the 14th day of February 24 by G. Charlie Nguyen, Mayor, which is me, and Kim Kibelin Ho, Vice Mayor, District 3, Amy Fan West, Councilmember, District 1, Carlos Manzo, Councilmember, District 2, and Nam Quan Nguyen, Councilmember, District 4. Congratulations. You want to say something? Okay. All right. They already said something already.
On behalf of the Westminster Club, I want to say thank you so much for this recognition. We couldn't have done it without, you know, without team, and we wanted to say that this is our first recognition from the city, so we're very proud, and we'll continue to do our best to do what we do at sport. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's quarter off time, right? Okay.
Okay, guys, we are so pleased that you have, you carry the name Westminster. You made us proud. So please do this again next year, okay? And we're so happy that you're here. I know you sacrificed your Valentine's Day to be here. We appreciate that. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. We read it here, and then we can...
Do you want to take the photo?
I thought we did. They wait. Oh, I thought... Don't leave yet. We still have one more. One more time, do we have a representative from New Vivid here, New Vivid Daily News? So anyway, I'm going ahead and present this anyway, and then we can send it to them. This certificate of recognition is presented to New Vivid News in recognition of your new year and 45th anniversary from 1978 to 2023, celebration and for your dedication and provide quality news and variety services to the community. And especially, they are located in the city of Westminster, so we love to have them. So let's take us the picture, and then we can...
The Photoshop.
All right, thank you very much. And can I give this back to you? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And a gentle reminder that today is a Valentine's Day, so it's a Valentine's Day, and so hopefully that we can end the meeting early so you can go home and enjoy with the family. And so hopefully that we can end the meeting early so you can go home and enjoy with the family. Next is the oral communication for agenda item only. I'd like to mention that this is for agenda item only and nothing else, nothing outside of agenda. If you can come up and say that agenda item that you wanted to speak about. And I have to apologize first if, you know, if you run out of the agenda item and I have to stop you. It is my job, which I don't want to do, but I have to do because we have the policy that I have to follow. So at this time, I would like to open up for the communication, agenda item only. So, City Clerk, would you please read the instruction into record, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the City Council regarding any items on the agenda. Unless otherwise extended by a majority vote of the City Council, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the City Council in person should complete a green speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the card to the city clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium. At that time, state your name and city of residence for the record. Our first speaker is Michael Varengia, followed by Tim Hogan.
Thank you. I'm speaking on item 5.1 for out-of-state travel for city council members. I'd like to ask that whoever winds up going there to actually, please go there to learn something. I don't want to see pictures on Facebook of representatives from our city sitting at the back of the room with their feet up on a chair, texting on their phone while there's a study session going on or hanging out, getting pictures taken while there's a study session going on. Actually, I think the city manager and city clerk are probably well recommended for that. I know you guys will go there and you'll do a top job for this city. I just don't want this to turn into a junket where the city council is laying money out, but you're not really getting anything back for your money. So if we can maybe talk our great city manager and city clerk into representing the city, that might be a good idea. This way, it doesn't take away the rest of you from any of your important work running the city. Anyway, thank you. I just wanted to get my 10 cents in. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tim Hogan, followed by Terry Rains.
Item 5.1. How fortuitous, a convention of commercial interest, all there to be wooed by prospective host cities. What a tremendous opportunity to make an intelligent pitch to bring new business into our little town. And we can certainly use more business. On the west side, it's not hard to see our need for new development. Look around, deteriorating centers, barricaded buildings, lesser quality stores, a cosmetics warehouse where once we had a grocery, a storefront church where there used to be a commercial business, empty pharmacies, empty entertainment venues, empty lots where businesses used to be. Now we hear rumors of apartments in mind for the Big Lots Center, a choice commercial location with prime freeway access. We cannot lose this center. We need consistent, long-term revenue. And for that, we need commercial development, retail businesses, a means to money. And to convince developers to consider us, we need to put our best foot forward. The choice to lead the delegation is obvious. Mr. Mayor, as chief executive for the city, it is your responsibility to guide us. Only your position as mayor will provide the necessary gravitas to this commission. For when needed, only the authority of a mayor may calm potential jitters and help sway prospective developers to choose Westminster. You have the wisdom as well to stay out of the way as staff address the issues they are best suited to explain. Your second, however, your partner in this critical venture, will need to be someone with as high a caliber profile as yourself. There are many qualified to assist, but the stakes are high, so we can send no less than our best. As a former vice mayor with a history of service to the community, Councilmember Nam Quan Nguyen stands out. His time on the Traffic Commission gives him the necessary background to know some of our city's most pressing needs, and he has built a vibrant business in Westminster. Our current vice mayor, Kimberly Ho, also possesses strong credentials to represent the city. Having served on both the Traffic and the Planning Committees, she is intimately aware of our city's needs and challenges. And she too has built a remarkably successful business here in our city and beyond. Councilmember Carlos Manzo has an equally impressive record of service and commitment. A former vice mayor, he served on the Planning Commission for eight years and chaired it for two. But it is his experience supervising large construction crews and coordinating with developers, contractors, architects, and designers, which makes him uniquely qualified to understand the needs and concerns of commercial developers. Of these three, I believe Councilmember Manzo has the edge due to the length of service and his experience in construction. I hope the council will agree and choose him to join our mayor for this important mission. Thank you.
Before you move on, I want to thank you for your input. I certainly agree with you that all of the council members here with the skill set that they have, I'm sure that we all put it forward and helped the city. So thank you very much. Next.
Our final speaker is Terry Rains.
Happy Valentine's Day. Will you all be mine? Item 1B, congratulations, New York News, 45 years. Certificates of recognition are for organizations, individuals that contribute greatly to Westminster, like this one, per the city policy. The religious spiritual organization Sri Vishnu Spiritual Azram, based in a house in Riverside, recognized last month, did not meet that criteria. Item 3.1, we were told the total cost to purchase and hang the former Republic of Vietnam and American flags on our streets would be $5,000, but this warrant register shows two payments totaling $6,780, a 36% increase because, quote, "The cost went up after the fact from the vendor," unquote. Why? Please pull item 3.3. In 2018, the city signed a $1 million contract with Tyler Technologies for finance, HR code enforcement, and community development software, including Intergov and Paid Park Consulting Group Thousands to be the chief implementation consultant. In May 2020, the city removed the Intergov Business Management Suite and excuse me, and Intergov Self-Service Portal from the Tyler contract, which may have been related to outsourcing business licenses, I'm not sure, since no one replied to my emails. Intergov features that were contractually promised originally are still not fully implemented six years later because staff did not want to or fully understand the features and system. The city paid SDI Presence Thousands for an Intergov system assessment presented to the council in May of last year stating a major Intergov upgrade was needed to activate features promised in the original contract. Last week, Director Lynn and Planning Manager Racky told me that the upgrade was completed, but it just changed the operating system from Windows Explorer to Chrome with no new features. But yet, a service portal was added to the Planning Department's webpage recently. Now the city wants to pay Park Consulting Group another quarter of $1 million for Intergov finance system enhancements, support, and maintenance and implementation of the Intergov Citizen Self-Service Portal promised years ago. What a costly mess. I was a project manager for several major software installations in the private sector, and I know firsthand what it takes to ensure a successful installation, training, upgrades, and maintenance. The city's costly issues here appear to be related more to incompetent or lazy city staff, not vendor or product limitations. Why are we still light years behind other cities' development, technology, and services? Item 5.1, most council members are not economic development experts and do not represent our city well at events like this. So we'd be better served just having Christina and Ora Dofo attend this one along with our Economic Development Manager. Oh, yeah, we don't have one. Item seven, why no commissioner committee appointments on this agenda when we have several critical vacancies and plenty of applications on file? And finally, items two and eight, did you all read and comprehend the handout regarding responding to public comment that I provided at the last meeting? If not, read it now and start complying with the Brown Act and First Amendment, or there will be hell to pay. You can bank on that.
And Mayor, we do have one final speaker, Min Vu.
Thank you.
Mayor, that completes our public comments for agenda items.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for coming out and expressing your opinion. And on behalf of the City Council and city staff, I want to thank you for your time. Next is the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion, followed by a rule called vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the City Council or staff request that specific item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action or discussion. With that, I'd like to pull item 3.8. Is there any other?
3.3, 3.5, and 3.7.
3.3, 3.5, 3.7, 3.8, correct? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the rest?
Yes, make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a
Second.
We have a second already. So we have a motion to approve the rest by Vice Mayor Ho and seconded by Councilmember Nguyen.
Okay, so I have a motion made by Vice Mayor Ho, second made by Councilmember Nguyen. This is to approve the consent calendar items 3.1, 3.2, 3.4, 3.6. The rest has been pulled for a separate discussion. I'll go ahead and call roll. Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next is item 3.3, agreement to with Park Consulting Group to provide Intergov and finance system enhancements, support, and maintenance. I believe this item called by Vice Mayor Ho.
I am so unhappy with Intergov and just what's going on in terms of, you know, because I've been here since the time our council, the council makeup was different at that time. I believe that was, was it 2018? According to this, says 2018, but I thought it was before that even. It was more like 2017 or
We have a presentation prepared that would walk you through some of the timelines if you're interested in that.
Yes, of course I do, but I just want to say that, you know, we had presentations before that. At the time, we allocated a lot of money, $1 million, you know, towards this. And I remember what I said at that time. I said, you know, we should find out what our problems are and we don't mind allocating the funds to have the, you know, the means for us to perform our job better. And I did say that, you know, be very careful because you're throwing money at the problem, but then you may not be able to solve, you know, the problem in the end. So I just want to, yeah, as we go through this, I know the presentation. I know what you're saying here and all that. But I just feel like, okay, we've thrown a lot of money out and we're not getting the return. So would you be able to like shed light on, towards the end of this report? You mentioned the fact that our community, your, is it, your, have we resolved the fact? Now, are community members, are they, are we, are they able to go visit online and be able to track? Because the last time I asked, they were not. And so that is something that we really need to focus on. So if you want to do your presentation and just make sure you answer that question.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Ho, I do understand your concern and I believe, I do have the same concern and I have a chance to talk with the staff a number of times already. I know staff have been working really hard on this. I believe that the presentation will help us understand more. So why don't we start with the presentation?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. We do have a presentation and I will jump ahead to answer your question, which is at the end of this discussion, you will have a commitment and a promise from this administration that your concerns will be addressed. But I'll get started with a little bit of background.
Thank you.
Item 3.3, a little bit of background, on November 28th, you're right, some of the work started before that. The City Council approved close to $1 million with Tyler Technologies. When we talk, when we think about Tyler Technologies, let's think about them as Microsoft. They oversee a lot of products. And the two products that we purchased from Tyler Technologies are Intergov and Munis. And the cost to implement Intergov was $375,000 and the cost for Munis is $611,000. A little bit of background on what Intergov is. It's a community-based development software. It's used by Community Development, Code Enforcement, Engineering, Community Preservation Unit. So it is, it is a very useful software and it is, it was implemented, not with all the features that we all expected to be implemented. In all fairness to the staff that are before you, we were at the time not in charge of the project implementation, but we have taken the bull by the horns and this will get done. And I will go over some of those deliverables coming up shortly. Munis is a finance program. So all departments pay their invoices and their vendors through Munis. It handles utility billing, cash receipts, accounts receivable, accounts payable, accounting, financial reporting, budgeting, and purchasing. Every single department and division in the city has a hand in Munis. So that, those are the, those are the two. To be fair, it has been characterized that $1 million went into Intergov. It's still a lot of money, $375,000 and Munis $611,000, but just to be specific there. On July of 2020, both programs were activated. And this consulting firm, working with a different leadership team here at the city, they implemented and supported the implementation of the launch of these softwares. July 20th through September 2023, the application processed what did improve, definitely with Intergov. There were also a lot of ADUs that came online around that period of time. So perhaps the measures of effectiveness are not as clear. But yes, all of the features that were promised, some of those features were not implemented as part of it. I can, I can, I have my ideas as to why they weren't. I think there was bad data that was, that was, that was not handled properly by staff at the time. And really, there was not a direct vision and a commitment. It should not be reflective of this current leadership or of Park Consulting. A consultant will do as much as the city manages them to do and holds them accountable to do. And features like the community services were not implemented. And that is something that we're looking to fix with this, with the current proposal. Excellent. So we talked about taking the bull by the horns. We understand and we heard loud and clear that the City Council wants better customer service at the counter, a better user experience. The city manager and I have gone to Vegas trade shows. We've interacted with other colleagues in other cities. And we agree with you, we are behind, we fell behind. And October 23rd, October of 2023, excuse me, through January of 2024, a little bit before October, we, we at the city manager's office took this project on. We took it in and it was run directly out of the city manager's office. We took it in and it was run directly out of the city manager's office. We had fallen behind as far as the product version. We were using an older product version, so we had to upgrade to the latest product version. In order to make this happen, we, I don't like using the word mandated, but we did mandate certain employees, including myself and the city manager, who were available during the holiday break because that was the best time to implement the upgrade without affecting the public. So while City Hall was closed, we did have members of all of the departments available to launch the new version, test the new version. And I'm happy to report that we successfully launched it on January 3rd or 4th when City Hall reopened after the holiday break. Of this year, yes. So over, from October 20, from October 2023 to January of 2024, we, we accomplished a great deal to get us to where we are today. Part of this big jump, it included comprehensive staff training. And then we were able to bring Park Consulting onsite to actually train our consultant, train our staff, excuse me, and actually be present as, when City Hall reopened to ensure that the new version was working well at the counter. So we had consultant staff shadowing city staff and making sure that the transactions were, were moving forward as, as expected. We also, we launched this more modern digital platform. And one of the key things that we were able to do that wasn't done in the past and it's something we're actually very excited about is that we integrated Munis with EnterGov. In the past, EnterGov was operating here, Munis was here, and there literally was digital interaction here. And then literally a piece of paper traveled from one side of City Hall to the other so that Munis can do its job. So we are now, those, those two items have been integrated. And that's actually a huge, a huge step in the right direction. Next steps, and this is what I alluded to, this directly answers your question. Next step, so we are going to activate the Citizen Self Portal. City manager and I were at a city manager's convention last week. A lot of the conversation that I had with my colleagues was how much of a service portal have you activated? Have you activated every feature? Did you do it all at once? And really, the answer is we need, we need a self-service portal. We do need to give customers the opportunity and the flexibility to do a lot of transactions online. And we are promising that we will be launching that by quarter one of this year. So essentially, end of March is what we're looking at. We're very confident that we'll be able to accomplish that. Will every feature known to man in the service portal be activated? The answer is no. There will be, part of the training is to launch the service portal and then to continue to work with our staff and really gauge the needs of the community to see if we're going to be able to activate everything. So just to give you an example of what we plan on doing for quarter one, it will, will allow applicants to check the status of their application and pay invoices, which is a big thing. I think that was the big promise the last time around. Allow the public to search for pending and completed permit applications. So that's something that, that will be done by quarter one. Allow for online submission of solar permit applications through the integration of the solar app. And that is a state requirement and that is actually something that's grant funded. I'll go into the cost breakdown in the next slide. Also, by quarter one, revolving around the solar app and configuration, the group, the consultant will assist the building division with the new state mandate to offer a streamlined online solar permit application process. This is the, this, this is the only, this is the only type of permit entitlement application that will be offered through the online by the end of quarter one. But there is definitely an opportunity to continue to add other application processes through the online portal. So what we're hearing is ultimately we're, we're headed towards a total modernization, but we can't commit to that happening until quarter four of this year. And that total modernization will essentially bring us in line with the most up-to-date and most technologically advanced cities in, in California. That is, that is the big promise and I'm very confident based on what we've been able to do since the fall till now that we will be able to deliver that by quarter four.
Yeah, I want to thank staff for taking initiative to work on these items because I know that there was a disconnect between the previous management and this. Therefore, at certain point, we are not moving at all. And, you know, and I worry about it. I mean, you know, we are paying for it and we are not using the system for anything. Then, you know, why pay for it? And we revisit the item and that's the reason why you now see that they have the action put in place.
Mayor, if I may, if I may just add really quickly, just, just to kind of sum it up. I, I know we've all been frustrated and current leadership as well about the lack of use and just the, just how disorganized, you know, implementation's been and just features not being used. And I guess at the end of the day, you know, we have spent a significant amount of time with this current leadership as well and as we've been updating you all on our progress and trying to get, you know, these, these things to work. You know, this last piece is really to help us get over those humps that should have been resolved a long time ago. But again, we can't speak for, for the past, right? We have our speculation and I, and our, our ideas on, you know, why things haven't worked before and why they haven't been consistent. But that's really where we're at right now is we've got, you know, we have a timeframe. We have obviously deadlines that we've placed on ourselves to make sure that these components are going to be activated so that we can finally put this to rest.
Councilmember, welcome to ask question, but at this point here, I'm very positive of trust with our leadership. So I move to approve this item.
I second it.
Before we go, we have a few questions.
Well, I believe that Vice Mayor Ho.
Thank you. So, you know, I'm, like I said, I'm not going to let it go that easily because, you know, I've been promised this before. And back in like 2018, when asked about it, the, of course, it's not this current leadership, I understand. But, you know, I was told that, you know, staff's going to be, going to be trained to use EnterGov. And I was so much looking forward to that. And I actually talked to a lot of developers and told them we're going to have this in place. And then now, how many years later? So it's quite frustrating and I just think that we just need a quarterly report. You know, set some timeline, set exactly the goals. I think that if you think from the perspective of your, of our clients or customers, our constituents, if you, and, and, you know, it really is the reason for the complaints that we're, we're still hearing from, you know, people from across the counter saying like they, the permitting process is too slow and they're frustrated. And I think it's perhaps this, number one is the communication, a lack of communication. So are they able to, at the end of this quarter, are they able, the customers, the developers, are they able to log on and follow their project?
That is correct.
And what are they following? What's gonna, what are they gonna know about their project?
They're gonna be able to follow, if it's a solar app application, they'll be able to follow that. And that is a state requirement and we're actually received a grant to fund that. By quarter one, it will allow the applicants to check the status of their application and pay invoices, allow the public to search for pending and completed permit applications and also align, again.
That's only for solar, correct?
No.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
And, and then also allow for the application of solar through EnterGov. And we're going to move towards, by the end of the year, we'll be bringing other applications to also be submitted through the online portal.
Okay, so I, I understand that they can, you know, I, I just think I'm talking about like construction projects where let's say if they're building an ADU, they have someone come in and submit. And once they have all their stuff together, you stamp the start time, right? And so you've got the state law telling you that you have 60 days, right? And that you gotta get a, give them a permit, right? So, so, so that's the developer. But what, what about the owners? Are they able to like, and developers can go on, log on and see where, where they're at? What that status is?
That's correct.
Is that right?
That's correct. And then the, the goal is to ultimately populate the, make, make public information available to anybody. So anybody can log in and a certain amount of public information can be obtained for different properties and processes throughout the city.
So like if the, you're saying like if the public wants to know like what's being built at that? Like I am, I've actually a little bit bewildered myself. What's being built on Westminster Boulevard in Golden West? You know, that's kind of east of Golden West and I think you guys are doing something. But let's say I can log on and say, well, what's going on here? Okay, so, and so that you're going to implement and that's going to be done by the end of this quarter, first quarter, correct?
Not for everything in the city, but for your particular project, yes. The goal is to ultimately build it up so that a lot of the other data you mentioned is also available through the public portal.
Okay, just, you know that you need to really reduce the, the public frustration with the process. You need to ASAP, like, you know, make sure you have good communications with them to allow them to log on and communicate, you communicate to them and they communicate to you. Is that right?
That is correct. And one of the, one of the biggest deficiencies that I discovered when we began the process is really the lack of standardizing the way that information is populated into the system and then the lack of quality control, right? So we were able to segment old data that was perhaps populated in a not very clean and efficient way. It's still there. If it needs to be re-accessed, we can. But moving forward, we have now training in place so that everyone that accesses the system is entering appropriate data and it's quality controlled. And then those that enter the data are being held accountable for any data mishaps on a regular basis. That's going to keep the data correct and that keeps the processes moving efficiently. That's the biggest problem. There was no, and there was not enough oversight.
No, I know that, I mean, I, I've gone through an implementation process with SEBEL. You know, you've heard of SEBEL CRN. They're huge and so they started the, you know, they started selling to the mid-sized business market. And so we went through an implementation process and it really is, is it, when you say lack of standardization, is it? I think that should be a problem with implementation. Because if you, let's say if, to see, you know, see if I'm understanding you correctly. It's like if a message is, let's say, the person's not home or maybe talk to the client or something, rather than letting them freehand, you're going to have like a, like a dropdown and, and click because that would be very standardized.
Correct.
And, and then you can actually, as directors or managers, they can click on there and see how many communications have been made successfully and how many haven't been made. Is that right?
That's correct.
So, yeah, all right. So that's the implementation part, that you need to communicate. The people who's doing your, who's doing your implementation?
Well, our implementation is the consultant that we're looking to retain.
The PCG?
But the end user, right? The end user is our staff. And our staff is going through a rigorous retraining to make sure that the data is entered appropriately so that if another person comes to the counter, it's a different technician at the counter, a different planner at the counter, that they're pulling up information. They understand where they left off and they understand what the next step needs to be.
So out of all the cities around us, what city are you, you, you think would be like up there that you want to emulate? I mean, perhaps you don't want to reinvent. You could ask the managers, talk to them. Because for me, I was so, I was actually, you know, I had to do some work with the city of Santa Ana and I was so shocked seeing how up to date they are, just totally unexpected, you know? I could pay bills online and I could like, you know, actually follow the construction process and permitting and all that online.
Correct.
Councilmember Ho, I may ask you to refine your question so the next council can go on.
Do you want to just answer that really quickly?
I can answer that really quickly. The first thing we did is we asked a consultant who works for many different cities throughout Southern California, who is your best client, which is your best integration? We want to follow that model. We're actually, we've identified a city, we've been interacting with their interface. We, we think it's clean, we think it works, and that's the path that we're following.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
We're not reinventing.
We're not reinventing.
Okay, Councilmember Menzo?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Vice Mayor, thank you for asking. I had some of, some of the same concerns and questions you had. You mentioned some of the, the departments that were going to be integrated into the system, but I didn't see, I hear you mentioned a building inspection, building inspector. Is that going to be in there?
It is. I, I kind of talked about departments and divisions, so Community Development, which is planning a building. And then I reminded everyone that it's Community Preservation Unit because sometimes, you know, we, we have a hard time placing them.
Everything underneath.
Code enforcement as well. And code enforcement, as you know, is currently in PDs. That's kind of, I broke them up when I was listing them out, engineering as well.
Okay. And then my, one of my questions is, so we purchased EnterGov, but then we have to hire a consultant firm to teach staff how to use it?
Absolutely. That's part of integration.
And why isn't EnterGov involved? And they just sell you this?
I think the, the best way to describe it, and I did this on the other end of the building when I was working in transportation, is you have these international vendors that provide the software. And it's unrealistic to have somebody from Microsoft come to LA, right? To help you integrate it. So they have, there are companies that are very well-versed in implementation of that bigger software. And that's what Park Consulting does. It's, it's no different than what we've done with our traffic equipment.
So total cost after it's all said and done, after the purchase in EnterGov and then the consultant firms, what is that total?
If Ashton can, if our city clerk can pull the presentation up again, I stopped short of sharing the last slide. So, so we talked about the 252,650 that is listed and this is the breakdown. The, the first line, we, we did identify $60,000 as a grant funded through a solar app. So we want to acknowledge Justin Wen in our building department for pursuing that grant. So really, the fiscal impact is 192,650. And this is the breakdown. EnterGov back office, the, the service portal and the solar app enhancements is 70,000. EnterGov support and maintenance is 43,450. And finance system support and maintenance is 79,200. Notice that the, the word finance in front of that last item. So that's really more focused on Munis needs that our finance department has. So really, when it, when we're talking about EnterGov, we're really talking about line number two and number three, which is the 70,000 and the 43,000 to get us to where we need to get to for EnterGov. So it's a little bit misleading when you look at the 252. Finance Munis support is the 80,000. And again, there's a 60,000 grant, $60,000 grant that we've taken advantage of. The total fiscal is 192.
For this PCG and, and EnterGov that we purchased this system through, it's way over a million then?
I, yes, I've added it up. I'm sure I trust your, your numbers.
Well, my concern is, you know, we don't have a, we have a history of maybe not following through step by step through processes from different, I think one of the main ones is the planning and also maybe code enforcement and building inspections is inputting. So all this fault relies on, if there's no inputting and the staff's not following the process, this system, this doesn't work.
In the integration world, the, the non-technical term is garbage in, garbage out. We, that's where we've been and we're going to fix that.
Okay, how much in, and with this Park Consulting Group, how much training is going to be involved? And until, is it just, they have so many sessions that do with staff and then they're done? And if staff does not get, still not, you know, 100% understanding, then that's on staff to kind of fend for yourself?
Or what's going to go ahead? We're, we're taking it one step at a time. This address is getting us to this finish line that I described during the, during the presentation. Park Consulting will have to remain a part of the city support system. Like we have support systems for our pay stations, for our signals, right? They're, they're still, they, they're still needed. In fact, there's a, there's a, another upgrade that's coming up in the near, in the not so far, not so distant future. So we're, we're committed not to just getting us to where we're at here and turning away. My goal, city manager's goal, is to get us to quarter four, monitor it closely and hand it back over to Community Development so that it can continue to move forward in the right manner. But we need to fix it and that's what we're, we're trying to do right now.
So when there's an upgrade to the system, how much do we have, what's going to be the cost? Do we have an, so every time there's an upgrade, we're going to have to. the cost? Do we have an S? So every time there's an upgrade, we're going to have to incur a cost?
The upgrade that Adolfo talked about of October 2023 to January 2024 already occurred. So that funding has already been expended. And the enhancements, which in the cost proposal slide shows $70,000, is kind of, I guess, like Adolfo was saying, tidying up the upgrade that already occurred. We can continue to have upgrades. We're currently on the 2022 version. But Park Consulting Group has assured us that the future upgrades will require a lot less training and will be a lot more seamless, quick process, not take the same amount of time and money based on just the complete reboot that came with the more modern digital platform. So a lot of what has already been put in is the upgrade has already occurred and the enhancements will follow. And by quarter four, hopefully, a lot of these things will be able to come to fruition.
Thank you, Ryan. If you think back to our computer, you know, PC days, there was big changes between Windows 3, Windows 5. And, you know, now the latest version of Windows is, is launched and there's a little training because it's very standardized. So we've peaked at what this other model city has done. And they're one version ahead of us. So the way we look now, we will look, no one will know that we're in the next version because we're on this new platform. That's, that's a, that's a very reliable platform. So the changes moving forward will not require learning from staff as much or learning from the public. It's just going to be on the backend as we add more and more features as we move along.
Yeah. I know, I just, I know there's a big investment and I want to make sure that we, our residents have the return on the investment. And because right now, I think we're lack on the customer service part of it. A lot of, we've all heard different complaints. We, I mean, I know I have. Is there just, there's a time that it's consuming that it just takes. And some businesses might want to go somewhere else because it's just too hard to do business here in the city. And that's the last thing we need.
Yeah. The city manager's office will remain involved, will be the, the point on this project until this council is satisfied. And then we will gradually transition it back to community development, which is where it started. So we're going to fix it. We're going to give it back to them. And there will be a reporting, if that's what I'm hearing from, from Vice Mayor Ho, that she would like quarterly reporting. Even when we get to the quarter four, we'd be happy to come back and let you know, show you features and let you know what the next steps are. Because we can't lose sight of the goal. I agree with you.
All right. One more, I just remembered. You mentioned you did not, customer, our community service department is not going to be, currently it's not, there's no plans, is there plans to implement this until year?
No, the community services department doesn't have any features in EnerGov and they aren't involved with it in any way.
What about when somebody applies for a park permit, a park use permit?
I believe that they have their own processes and it doesn't involve the same type of system that some of the more technical development applications involve. And they haven't been integrated because of those reasons.
So currently, they can't apply online currently, right?
I'd have to ask our director that question. I see where you're going with your questioning. So we will look into what these model cities are doing to see if, how, how diverse their integration is across the city.
So currently, we use ActiveNet, which is a recreation management platform that many cities use for park use requests or field use or facility rentals. We, there is the capability to do that online and we just have not implemented that because of the, some of the unique needs that go into the use of those facilities, that it's better to do those currently over the counter. But it is something that is available and that we are looking at.
Yeah. Is that something that I think we need to get with the times, you know? We, everything is done online.
Agreed.
And we, the last thing we want to make is with folks need to come physically to the counter. It's a lot of form. They should be able to do it online. So how, how do we, how do we get to that point?
It'll be some implementing some of the features in the configuration of the platform and staff training.
And that's something, what do you foresee, like a timetable for that?
We could probably look at it. There'll be some training costs involved. I'll, I'll say six months.
I mean, before, before that, I'm just going to jump in. Some of our, some of our policies that are related to park requests, et cetera, are a bit outdated. So we probably need to come back to council first to update those before we update the system. So.
Okay. We put it, we need to put it on the to-do list, accomplishments.
It's actually on my goal list.
Okay.
You know, I may just make.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. A quick comment is that, here's the thing. I know a lot about implementation of systems, okay, computer systems. And so what you have are systems with all the bells and whistles possible. But without implementation and your commitment to implement, then, and you have to sit down with the company. So you have to dedicate the time. So, you know, it's not going to happen on its own because that company cannot be responsible for the content. So I thank you for that commitment. And I look forward to hearing from you quarterly.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. I, I know that your questions are valid questions, but we have a lot to go. I want to jump back to Councilmember West. Do you have anything to?
You know, I do hear the concerns of the council up here. It is important to make sure that we put the people's tax dollars to good use, especially running, you know, programs and to incentivize businesses into our city. It is the bloodline to our economy. So I do hear my colleagues' concern. And I think, you know, coming back every month, updates on what you guys are doing and improving, I think that's important. But I think there needs to be a timeframe as well. Maybe in six months, if we don't see any change or turnaround. I mean, I feel like our, the people's tax dollars is not wisely invested. Maybe we need to look for another company. But as of right now, I think it's good to go, you know, back and forth to the council and giving us updates and maybe a timeframe. That's what my thought is.
Before we go on, thank you very much, Council. There's no comment from Councilmember Nguyen. But I, I'd like to go back. I believe that the, the request was every quarter, not every month.
Yes.
So I wanted to make sure that the Councilmember West know about it. You just mentioned every month. It's not every month. So I'm going to modify my, my motion to include that the staff will bring back every quarter to update the council of the progress. If it is approved, to move forward.
I second, I second. And I'd like to just add, here's the thing. We cannot abandon the project. When you say, I know, just like a little bit of comment regarding Councilmember West's comment, is that we cannot abandon, because you're talking about banning, throwing away a million bucks plus. So I, I believe in, in the current leadership and I know you can do it. So we just.
For sure.
You know, we want to be on the same boat with you and we like, like those updates. That's all. Thank you.
So we have a motion by Mayor Nguyen and second by Vice Mayor Ho to approve this item.
So I have a motion made by Mayor Nguyen, second made by Vice Mayor Ho, that is to approve the agreement with Park Consulting Group to provide ongoing EnerGov and finance system support and maintenance in addition to the implementation of EnerGov citizen self-service and other enhancements through December 31st, 2024, in an amount not to exceed $252,650. And I approve a budget adjustment for the California Automated Permit Processing Program grant in the amount of $60,000 to the building intergovernmental state other revenue account and building contractual services expenditure account, and direct staff to bring quarterly updates to the city council. I'll go ahead and call roll. Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0.
Next item is 3.5, award of contract for the playground renovation project for Newcastle Park, project number P-2565. This was pulled by Councilmember West, right?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you, Jake, for coming to speak on this matter here. I guess my concern is, I understand this is for the park, Newcastle Park. I guess my, I have three questions. So with this, is this a complete remodel of the park or just for the playground? That's number one. Number two, and I guess, is this going to pull out of the general fund? Or do we have funding set aside for the park? I guess those are my two question right now.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. To answer Councilwoman Fan West about, the first question is, this project's only remodeling the, or upgrade the playground of that Newcastle Park only, not, not the entire park. Newcastle Park was upgraded, I think, back in 2012, when we did the whole citywide, you know, mass, you know, park upgrade. That we have touched some of the canopy. We have, you know, resurfacing the basketball courts. And we did some improvements there already. But this particular project only touched the playground area. To answer your second question is, we are using the park dedication fund to fund this project. So no general fund being used toward this one.
That's good. And I guess, how much do we have in that reserve?
So prior to the meeting, I have checked with the finance director, Aaron Bax. And we do have the balance approximately about $2 million in the park dedication fund.
That's perfect. Thank you.
All right. With that.
Mayor, may I ask?
Yes, please.
So just, I just discovered there's an error, there's typo errors on the report under the recommendation, recommended action para A. Staff only request, we need to request only 228,308 instead of 288,308.
Okay.
This is 3.7 we are talking about?
Sure. So.
Two, 3.5?
3.5. Under the recommended action, we need to, we're just asking to have the adjustment of 228,308 instead of the 288,308.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that question. So do I hear a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
I second it.
Okay. Motion to approve by Councilmember Menzo and second by Councilmember West.
Thank you, Mayor. So the motion was made by Councilmember Monzo, seconded by Councilwoman Fan West. This is to approve a budget adjustment from the park dedication fund balance, Fund 200, to an existing CIP project, account number 76502-762203, playground replacement at Newcastle Park, in the amount of $228,308. And I approve the award of contract to the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $363, $363,916 to Western Estate Builders, Inc., and that all other bids be rejected, and authorize a 10% contingency in the amount of $36,391.60 for potential change orders, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city in a form approved by the city attorney. I'll go ahead and call roll. Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0.
The next item is 3.7, adoption of resolution approving the 2023 West Orange County CERT memorandum of understanding, MOU. This item was pulled by?
Myself.
By?
Councilwoman.
Councilmember West, go ahead.
I guess we're waiting for Chief when he gets back. This is his item.
Waiting for who?
The Chief, Darren?
What's the question?
Go ahead, go ahead and address the question.
So, okay, I'll ask the question. So the question is, let me see here. So with, how do you guys go about selecting or selection of candidates for the CERT team? It seems like a great team of volunteers that you can select. Hi, Chief. I have a question for you. Okay. Thank you, Chief, for being here. This is, it seems like a great program for volunteers for the CERT team. It seems like it's a crucial team that you can bring out to different events. But in a disaster event, if we do have it, that you can bring them out as well to assist. Now with this team, how do you go about selecting those candidates that qualify for the CERT team?
Sure, Councilwomen. So the Community Emergency Response Team, they recruit about once a year. You can sign up. You go through a series of courses. And at the end, as long as you show proficiency in going through those courses, you can become a member of the team.
That's great. And I do see here that you do, you have select three Westminster resident. That's pretty amazing. Now, the rest of the team, are, are they outsiders? Or do they just, how do you select the rest?
Yes, we, we don't select the rest. Other, other cities select the rest. So it's a regional team for West Orange County. So our, our neighbors participate with us, making the team much larger. And for mutual aid events such as the Tet Parade, we had CERT members out there assisting with that. And again, they're volunteers. It doesn't cost us anything.
Okay. So how do people in our community, I know that you only have three that volunteer for this program. Can they, can more volunteer and participate? How do, what is the process? And how do they go about applying for it?
So when we have open processes, it's when they have courses that we're going to be putting on. Because we can't do it for only a few volunteers. So they wait until we have a number of them. We regularly recruit on our social media. So for anyone out there that's watching this that might be interested in being a CERT member, just watch our, our social media when it comes up. Or just call the police department and ask to be put on a waiting list for when we're able to partner up to do the courses.
That's perfect. Thank you so much, Chief.
You bet.
Do I hear the approval for this item?
I motion to approve.
Second. Okay.
I have a motion made by Councilwoman Fan West, a second made by Councilmember Monzo, that is to adopt resolution number 5240, entitled, "A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, California, Approving the City of Westminster's Participation in the West Orange County Community Emergency Response Team Memorandum of Understanding, and Authorize the City Manager and the Police Chief or their Designees to Complete and Sign All Necessary Materials to Facilitate the MOU." I'll go ahead and call roll. Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen? Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
5-0 motion carried.
Yeah, as I, as I sit up here, I, I know that Councilmember Nguyen, I think he is ill today. He is, he doesn't feel well. And at this minute, I saw that he had, Mr. Mayor, I don't feel well. May I be excused for the rest of the night, please? Thank you. Your excuse and.
Hope you feel better.
Please. All right. Thank you. Next item is 3.8, approval of proclamation. This item was pulled by me. And the reason I pull is I want to make sure that we present, because this month is going to be a Black History Month. And I'd like to go ahead and present the proclamation right after approval. So with that, I move to approve that.
Second.
I have a motion made by Mayor Nguyen, a second made by Vice Mayor Ho, and that is to approve the proclamation for Black History Month. I'll go ahead and call roll. Councilwoman Fan West?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Do I have President McDonald with Orange County Black Chairman here? Okay. All right. I will invite you in a few minutes here. This proclamation is a Black History Month and this month is February 2024. Whereas Black History Month started in 1926, when Dr. Carter Wilson, distinguished African-American author and founder of the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, launched Nigga History Week to celebrate and showcase the historical contribution of African-Americans. And whereas many important events have occurred in February affecting the African-American community, including the birth of renowned civil rights leader W. E. B. Du Bois in 1868, the passing of the 15th Amendment granting African-Americans the right to vote in 1870, and the creation of the NAACP in 1909. and the creation of the NAACP in 1909. And whereas in 1976, it evolved into a month-long celebration and national birthday holiday when President Gerald Ford officially designated February as a Black History Month to highlight contribution that African-Americans have made in areas including science, arts, politics, and religions. And whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements by African-Americans and a time for recognizing their central role in U.S. history. And whereas Black History honors the accomplishment men and women who have become strong role models, including Joseph Park, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Harriet Tubman, and Frederick Douglass. Now, therefore, I, Chi Chalenguen, Mayor, City of Westminster, on behalf of Vice Mayor Kim Lee Ho and Councilmember Amy Van West, Carlos Manzo, and Nam Quan Nguyen, do hereby proclaim February 2024 as a Black History Month in the City of Westminster, and encourage all resident to recognize the accomplishment while acknowledging the struggles of the African-American community, and commit to working toward the ideals of equality, diversity, freedom, and opportunity. Signed and dated this 14th day of February 2024 by City Council Chi Chalenguen, Mayor, Vice Mayor Kim Lee Ho, District 3, Amy Van West, Councilmember, District 1, Carlos Manzo, Councilmember, District 2, and Nam Quan Nguyen, Councilmember, District 4. At this time, I would like to invite all councilmembers to come to the podium so that we can present it to President McDonald with Orange County Black Chamber. So again, on behalf of the City Council and city staff, and again, on behalf of the City Council and city staff, which we all work together to make sure that everything, you know, in place and for the citizens of City of Westminster. And we would like to recognize the Black History Month, and would like to present it to you.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you all.
I'm on behalf of the Black Chamber Board and Advisory Committees and Boards we have. Thank you very kindly for this. It's even more apropos because it's the 40th anniversary of the Black Chamber this year in Orange County. So it's significant to have this. And again, I want to thank you all for recognizing Black History Month, recognizes us in the community, and we've been a big, big supporter of all the communities. In fact, I'm glad we had a tour a couple of weeks ago with Cal State Fullerton, and I'm a Vietnam veteran. So I've been across the street a couple of times with presentations and research bearings. But again, thank you so much for what you have done here in the community. We've tried to be multicultural, cross-cultural, diversified in all our neighborhoods and all the things we've done here for the last 40 years, and we will continue to do it. And again, what an honor. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Moving along regular business, this is item 5.1, approval of hour of state travel for up to two councilmembers to attend Innovating Commerce Serving Communities, which is ICSC 2024 Conference at the Las Vegas Convention Center from May 19 to May 21, 2024. So let me ask staff for a brief report, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and everyone that's still left with us today. So this is a request to consider up to two councilmembers to attend the ICSC conference. So in the past, once upon a time, the city would attend ICSC, and back then it was called the International Council of Shopping Centers, in which later was rebranded to what it is today, Innovating Commerce Serving Communities. And so this conference is, it's, you know, one of the largest conferences, if not the largest conference, that allows developers and different types of, you know, shopping center owners, managers, investors, retailers to come together and basically, you know, have a platform to make deals. You know, cities attend the conference to try to connect with interested developers and investors who want to come into Westminster. It's been around for a long time, and, you know, the city just started going back to attending the event two years ago. My first time was last year. Unfortunately, the year before I was registered, but had COVID, so it did not work out for me. But the goal of attending this conference is for us to get exposure, to put Westminster back on the map, to get connected, you know, with business opportunities and development opportunities for the city. So really, what we're planning on doing this year, so for the last few years, it's, the attendance has been just limited to, you know, basically walking around the floors. We've had materials made for the first time that we've passed out to, you know, prospective investors that really highlight some of the things that we're doing in the city, some of the projects that we have, and of course, the vision for the future of the city. And this year, what we're looking to do is step that game up a little bit and actually have a booth for the city. And so what that looks like, other cities that do this, they'll rent a booth, so generally maybe a 10 by 10, you know, booth space in which other folks that are walking around the floor can come to our city, stop by, learn a bit about Westminster. And then we ourselves, as registered, you know, pre-registered attendees, we can make appointments with, you know, developers in advance or other vendors or folks that we think would benefit our city, make appointments in advance, and we have our booth where we could have these meetings with them. That's generally what cities do. They'll have tchotchkes that they'll give out, so little giveaways of, you know, trinkets and things that promote our city. They'll have maps that show, you know, what our city looks like, photos. If you want to get fancy, they've got TVs running with a reel, you know, the entire time on the convention floor. But there are also sessions that are held during ICSC as well, so you can learn from industry leaders regarding trends that are happening, what the market looks like, what, you know, developers are looking for, and just really, just really get a feel for what the current market looks like for, you know, for development and how we can leverage that and bring, you know, and bring some really productive, you know, meaningful conversations or have meaningful conversations and really bring some of those, you know, developers to our city. So in a nutshell, we're asking for some assistance with, you know, with attending the conference, really to not only attend some of those sessions, but to help us man the booth. As of right now, it's myself and the Assistant City Manager that will be going. We don't have an economic development manager, excuse me, unfortunately. But, you know, we would like to have additional presence who can really promote the city in a positive light. You know, last year, we were really excited to talk to developers about mixed use, about Westminster Mall coming in. You know, we really reached out to folks who were experts in acquisitions and who were really looking for acquisitions. And so, you know, we talked about some of the opportunities that we have here, but we're really, again, trying to step up that game with a booth and more presence and, you know, just trying to entice more coming into Westminster.
Well, thank you very much for that. I believe that what you just said in line with Mr. Hogan's recommendation earlier. And so I appreciate for that input again. And unfortunately, I believe that we only have two people to attend, to council attend the event just because we are going to talk about, you know, new development and everything. So it's related to the city business. And maybe because of that, therefore, we're limited to two council only. And whatever, whoever is going to this, I believe that we need to, we need to somehow sell ourselves to them because these are developers. I know for the last several years, because of what going on with the City of Westminster, you know, we give them a bad impression to invest with the City of Westminster. And now we are, over the year, we can see that we actually put Westminster on the map throughout all the events that we have, especially the event that we just had last week, you know, all over the world, they know about what we are doing. So, you know, I'm sure that investors are looking forward to invest into the City of Westminster. So whoever going to that, I think we need to convince them that, you know, the new management, a new leadership for the City of Westminster. So at this point here, we have for the two council.
Would you like to speak first?
Yes.
I have a question.
Vice Mayor Ho asked to speak first. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to go because I think that, you know, acquiring or sitting down and convincing and selling ourselves, that's all, you know, we got to put on a business hat, and I'm very trained for that. And as you already know, I think it's really, and then, of course, my side work, my sideline of business is in developing small shopping strips. And so I think it's really important that we put our best foot forward and we talk as, of course, you know, we got to use our marketing skills and talk about what's best, what's in it for them, sort of thing. And so I think I would like to go. As a matter of fact, ICSC is some, I keep asking every year, about three months ago, four months ago, I asked Christine Corden, I said, when is that coming? We haven't been to ICSC for a long time. So I'm glad to see that on the agenda this time. And I think it's really important for our city, yes, to be able to get out there and be a little more proactive at bringing business back here. So I'd like to go, and I feel that I'm, I guess I'd have to say that, I can't say that I'm better than others, but being that you can only choose two, and you got the mayor going, and so I'd like to go as a second person.
Yeah, I'm a mayor, if I may.
Yeah, can I go first?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm glad that you mentioned that you want to represent, you know, the city to go over there and convince the investor. And, you know, I would like to open up for every one of you so that if you're interested to go, then you can always, you know, speak up, and then it will be the final vote after all. As a mayor, yes, of course, I want to represent the city, and I want to attend the event.
If I may ask one other question before moving on. So I'd like to, I'd like to know, I don't think there's Brown Act problem, right? We're not going to discuss anything. We're only meeting the people, right? If they're, if, let's say, a third person want to go and pay his or her way?
Yeah, there is an exception to the Brown Act rule for conferences.
And that's fine, right?
That's correct. But you're not allowed to obviously get together and talk about city business.
Correct. Yes, I understand that.
So beside that Brown Act, is there any concern from staff that we have three people to go?
You know, the only thing is we would just have to increase the budget. Right now, it's looking at a little over 3,000 per person. Registration is about 2,000, like 1,500 alone. That's just the cost of the registration, and then obviously hotel rooms for each of you and your meals. So you'd be, we'd be looking at probably closer to about $10,000 to send all three. But, you know, the model that we use in asking for less than a quorum, we followed Garden Grove. That's how, that's what their model was, is, you know, less than a quorum.
Okay. Can I go ahead and ask?
So I have a question.
Councilmember West?
Well, I was.
Oh, you first, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I understand that, you know. I think this is, as you can see in our community, we desperately need to attract developers to our community. And for my council, excuse me, Vice Mayor Ho and I, we both served on the Planning Commission. I served for eight years. And then, but I think one of the big things is that, you know, with these conferences, networking is huge. And from what I understand, and I actually, full disclosure because I'm not about keeping secrets, I know a lot of the members who attend these conferences because of my day job. And last year, I knew some of them were there, and I was actually on the phone trying to connect our team with them on the phone through, when I was at work, because I knew that I found out they were there. So a lot of these relationships with developers I built over 30 years in the field. So when you come up to somebody and you know them and you have other relationships in common, they know people that I know. I think that goes a long way. So I think for the benefit to the community, that's why I think that I would be a good candidate for that and understanding land use zoning that we learned at the Planning Commission and doing it for eight years. It's, I think a lot of those, that information, it goes a long way to help us to be able to have those conversations with developers. So if there's a way that I can go, I mean, I'd be interested only because I think it would be benefit for the community. As Council, Vice Mayor Ho, she has good qualifications as well, but I just think that my background would be a really asset, so that's it.
I think the best that we have, you know, representative, and I appreciate that you're interested in the industry. Councilmember West?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess my question is, you say it's due to the quorum, the Brown Act. That's why we can't have more than?
Without the, the.
We're amassing city.
The city attorney really correct that, okay?
So basically, we don't have the funding in the City of Westminster. Is that what you guys are saying?
Well, so because this is the first time we're actually presenting it as a staff report this way, we were mindful of using what a lot of cities do, which is they have less than a quorum of 10, but also we wanted to be mindful of the funding. You know, of course, you know, as City Attorney said, there's an exception for conference. You know, we, all five of you went to the conference last year. So there are exceptions for these types of things. But it's really, you know, it's really up to you as the council what you'd like to do. But our baseline was to present something that is similar to what other cities present.
So my question to you, City Manager, did we actually budget for this year, for this?
So ICSC is, it was not budgeted specifically for this, but it would come out of economic development funds, which came from sales of properties once upon a time. So that's where this would come from. So there is fundage for this if you chose to, you know, to send more than the two that we're asking for.
So how much do we have in the economic funding right now? Well, how much do we have?
Aaron's going to look that up.
Well, are you done? Councilmember West?
So I'll let Aaron look at that while I'll make a statement. So I would like to go due to the fact that I think it's important to, you know, and people who can reach, breach the gap and paint a picture of why it is crucial for the City of Westminster to incentivize businesses and developer to come into the city is because it is a great opportunity for growth and great opportunity for vision. So those developers, and they need to have our vision. If we can come and paint a picture that this is, it's like a playing field. If you come and you develop this, this is going to incentivize them to see that same vision and say, you know what? This is a great opportunity to do something about it and to make a difference. And as we understand, I mentioned earlier in the closed session, is that why do young family like us go down to Newport Beach, go down to Corona Del Mar, or go down to Laguna Beach? It's because they have things that we want to spend money in and because they have development. So in the City of Westminster, if we paint that picture that we can be this ground game for developer to come in and start building something, I think it's important to bring that vision. It is going to be a win-win situation, but negotiation as well. And I think if you can bring that negotiation and that picture of why they can do something. And I think if you can bring that negotiation and that picture of why they can do something, and this is, they can pioneer, you know, their vision in our city, that is a plus. And I think it's important to have someone who can do that and bridge that gap and represent city Westminster and incentivize developer to come into the city. And that's the reason why I would like to go. But, you know, I mean, it's up to the council, you know, whatever you guys decide, it's, it's gonna be upon you guys to decide who is best to represent us. But as you know, my vision since day one, I've always wanted to make sure we have the economic development in our city, to beautify our city, to incentivize business into the city and development. And we have many opportunity for that area, but we need to bridge that gap and paint that picture for them to want to be here because they see the vision.
What I'm hearing is, are you done? Are you done, Councilmember West? What I'm hearing is all four members of the city council here wants to attend the, the, what is it?
ICSC.
ICC, ICSC, which is the convention, right? Though I think that we-
Mayor, may I interrupt you?
Let me finish it. Yeah. But I think that with the budget that we are setting right now, I think that there are two things that we have to make decision now. Number one, we have to make decision whether we are going to extend more than two people to attend this convention or not. The second one, if we, if we choose two, then who are the two? But before we do that, let me do this, to make it easy. I mean, Councilmember Nguyen is not here, so he's lost, right? And we have four of us here, but I can understand that, you know, the budget issues. Myself, I will withdraw from this so that we can choose two, two members to go, but I will go by myself. I will be there myself, I will pay for it myself. So I find a way to do it myself, which is not going to, to use the, the city budget. So, you know, so I can have those two, the three of you can choose the, the two that are going to go to that convention, that's my recommendation. So I don't know if you have any-
I do, I was wondering if we can just draw, you know, in the drawing, if Christine can just, you know, pick out two names-
No, I don't think so. We have the council, we are going by the vote of the majority of the council. We are not going to draw anything, yes.
Yes, I have to nominate myself. And then I also nominate Vice Mayor Ho. I can nominate you.
Thank you, I accept. And, you know, here's the thing, is for me, I'm, you know, I dedicate, I will work 110% to, because I am a business, business person, it's just in my DNA, and so I'm thinking-
Vice Mayor Ho, can, can I stop you there?
Thank you.
Can I stop you? Because we heard you already and, and Councilmember Menzo already nominate you and you second yourself already. I think that, that's good enough.
What I, what I wanted to, like, when we choose somebody, we, we are going to choose, I'm just saying, suggesting that complimentary skill set.
Let's do the nomination first.
Yes, thank you.
So I, I will second you as a, as a second member to go on, on that, Councilmember Menzo.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I, I wanna make a, an amendment to my motion.
Okay.
I wanna make an amendment to, for if we're, if three of us are gonna go, that the budget, say city manager, city manager, whatever the budget is, what was it, 6,000? No, no, 6,000 for the two?
6,000 for the two.
Okay. If the three of us, if there's three councilmembers that are going, that we only expend the six and we, and whatever the, the cost is above the six, that we split it up amongst the three and pay that difference so that the mayor doesn't pay all on his own, so.
No, I, I, let me tell you this, I don't mind.
No, I know you don't mind.
So I, I, I don't need that.
No, I know.
I am completely withdrawn and I don't want to use anything from, from the, from the city.
Okay, Mayor.
You don't worry about me, worry about you two or the you three.
Okay, Mayor, that's fine.
So at this point here, I would like to know that I heard there are two nominations, one nomination is for Vice Mayor Ho and the nomination is for Councilmember Menzo. Is there any other nomination? I don't hear anything else, so we have two nomination, let's do the nomination first and, well, basically, we have only two, so why don't we go ahead and roll call for, for the first one and second one?
So let's just treat it as a motion to approve those two councilmembers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion made by Councilmember Monzo and a second made by Mayor Nguyen. And this is to approve Councilmember Monzo and Vice Mayor Ho to attend the travel to Las Vegas, Nevada for the 2024 ICSC Las Vegas Conference from May 19th to May 21st, 2024. Okay, I'll go ahead and call roll. Councilwoman Van West?
I abstain.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Anything else for this item from the staff? Okay, thank you very much. Next item is oral communication for non-agenda item. So at this time, I would like to invite for those who sign up for oral communication with non-agenda items. So City Clerk, would you please read the instruction in the record, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the city council regarding any non-agenda items that are within the subject manager's jurisdiction. Unless otherwise extended by a majority vote of the city council, comment shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the city council in person should complete a green or yellow speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the card to the city clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time and state your name and city of residence for the record. Our first speaker is Sean Garcia. I don't see him, so the next one is going to be Doreen Mayo.
Hi, thank you, I'm Doreen Mayo, I live in Huntington Beach. I'm here to represent my daughter Joy Medina, who is a resident of Westminster and has been a resident for about 15 years. She lives in a residential care home now and she has the entire time she's lived in Huntington Beach until, I mean, in Westminster. She lived in a residential care home called LP Care. It's located on Monterey Circle and it changed ownership about five years ago to Peter and Wendy Tran. Marie Volker is a live-in caregiver who's lived in the home for about 14 years. Phil Tran, who's the son of Wendy and Peter, is the administrator of the home. The family are, she, she no longer lives there, but the family is concerned about potential physical neglect, emotional abuse, and financial abuse and neglect that occurred in that home when she lived there. Joy felt she couldn't speak openly regarding things happening in the house. She was coached on what to say. That's what I'm supposed to say was something that I heard or say once, and also what happens in the house stays in the house. Family complained to Regional Center Ombudsman Licensing. Phil, Phil Tran, the administrator, confirmed that the caregiver, Marie Volker, was trying to alienate Joy from her family and friends. He said he, he called her that devil. He said, I know that devil is trying to alienate your daughter. He said he would not fire Volker because he was afraid that she would sue him. Volker told Joy, my daughter, that Phil Tran wouldn't let her visit family. So, anyway. Joy has a job and she also has qualifies for social security disability. She was told that she had no money for visiting her sisters and stepmother in Northern California, buying a plane ticket to Sacramento. She was told she couldn't take vacations and that they, she didn't have money for routine dental care. However, receipts show, that we now have receipts show that she, she signed for almost $4,000 in waxing and facial costs. Social Security Disability canceled her payments at about May 2022, said Phil Tran, or Peter Tran was not completing his duties as representative payee. She owed them more than $12,000. According to their records, yeah, she owed more than $12,000. Her stepmo, Joy was subsequently evicted on December 7th of '22 after her stepmother filed a complaint because Marie Volker was coaching Joy what to say when she was asking Jennifer for her late husband's social security number. We're asking for help.
Thank you very much. First of all, on behalf of the city council and staff, I would like to thank you for taking the time to be here on behalf of your daughter and present the situation. I don't think that we can resolve the problem at this point. I would like to refer you to talk to our community, start with the community director of community service, which is Vanessa Johnson, I don't forget your name again, right? So start from there and then see if she can help you.
It's actually gonna go to PD first because it'll go, it will go to PD, yeah.
Okay, then, then let's-
Yes, Mayor, she, she already has Deputy Chief Weber's information.
Okay, already. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Oh, our next speaker is Love.
Happy Valentine's Day, everybody, and I'm just here to support Doreen and Joy. I'm like an aunt to Joy, I've known her since she was 18 months old. And I saw a huge change in her when she was going through, it was like, it started around COVID time, there seemed to be a lot of stuff going on in the home and, and Joy was just withdrawn and distant. And we know that she, one of her issues is having seizures and there were, they were not reported, injuries that weren't reported, the money situation. I went over there with Doreen to get the financials, which they brought out, they said they were in storage because they were having an audit or something. I mean, it was just bizarre, the things that they were coming up with and the things that they showed us weren't even, they weren't real, they weren't real documents, they weren't signed by anybody. It was just a bizarre thing. And I just wanted to support them in their efforts to get something done with this home. And there's six other ladies that live there and I'm sure they're having problems too. So it's not just Joy, but it's just this home in particular and the management. So if there's anything that anybody can do, we'd appreciate it, family. Thank you so much.
Again, thank you very much for coming to the city council. I just want to mention that, you know, some of the thing that you, you ask for help is not under our council, city council authority, so we are not sure we can do anything for you. At the same time, we, you know, things, if it's not under the city jurisdiction, then we can't do anything for you. But, you know, I appreciate that you come out and talk about it and see what we can do, okay? We're not promising you anything, but, you know.
We do appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you so much. All right, next.
Our next speaker is Michael Varengia.
First of all, Mayor, thank you for stepping up to the plate to help your city out in going there. Thank you very much. I would much rather see these two councilmembers go. They really are interested in the city. I'd rather not have somebody that was a self-promoting individual wanting to go there. Okay, the topics I'd like to bring up, you know, for somebody that is interested in bringing business to the city, how about if you focus on District One, because there's gonna wind up being even more businesses going out right around the corner from where you live? Maybe if you put that kind of effort into bringing business in that you put in for getting these flags up in the city, maybe, maybe we'd have more businesses come into the city. And did anybody ever tell you that you abstain when you have a conflict of interest? Not because you don't wanna vote no or vote yes? If you have a conflict of interest, that's when you abstain. Also, you probably shouldn't send your husband out to confront parking control when you don't want a ticket written for your RV that's been parked out on the street for too long. That's real poor taste on your part. And Mayor, we still have an opening on the Measure Y Oversight Committee, is that correct?
That's right, that's right.
You guys gotta get that final opening filled because unless they get a full committee there, you're not gonna have any chair, you're not gonna have a vice chair. We need to get that thing going for this city so the residents can see what's going on. Anyway, that's, those are my final comments. And like I said, I'd love to see you put, you can smile all you want over there and smirk, but if you put that much interest into representing District One, maybe those people over there would really appreciate you, but you really haven't shown much interest in businesses being boarded. And no, you don't have to answer me now, this is my turn to speak. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I wanna address quick, briefly?
Yes.
So Michael, you know, it's funny that you said, you know, I sent my husband for an RV. We don't even have RVs parked, so I don't know where you get that information from. Please get the fact correct. And then number two, we are talking about business in the city. It takes a while to get people to buy off the building at, you know, the big lot and it's in the process of escrow. So please, if you know the backdrop of what we're doing here, you would appreciate that. But instead of that being part of the solution, you're part of the problem, you're just blaming. So maybe you should meet with me and I would love to sit down with you and tell you what's going on, what we're doing in the background. But obviously, you don't wanna be a part of that because you have a special interest of hate. So therefore, it's best that you speak truth. So up here, I'm speaking truth. So please get your fact correct, thank you.
All right, next.
Our next speaker is Tim Hogan, followed by Terry Reins.
I have traveled extensively in Westminster. And everywhere I go, I inquire of my neighbors, their opinion of our little town. Disturbingly, the optimism of past years has faded, replaced with dark forebodings of enveloping calamity. Where before the voices spoke of hope, now they echo Betty Davis in one of her bleakest roles. What a dump. Look around, it's not hard to see why. Deteriorating commercial centers, barricaded buildings, empty stores, vacant lots where businesses used to be, and everywhere it seems, the homeless wander aimlessly, imbuing us all with nameless dread of what tomorrow may bring. But it needn't be this way. Our future is not immutably cast. We can change it if we but have the courage to act sensibly. Let's start with the half-cent tax. When it passes and our coffers are freshly, are newly flush, let us resist the temptation to repeat the mistakes of the past and use this money strictly for daily operations. Instead, let us invest in our future. We need an Economic Development Director, a seasoned voice who can help us rebuild this town, someone who can help us grow future revenues. For what good will it do to raise the tax if revenues continue to plunge? As I warned months ago, the half-cent tax may only yield a larger slice of an ever smaller pie. To ensure success, we must grow the pie. And to accomplish this, we need professional help. We need someone with a wherewithal to attract business. We need an Economic Development Director, and a good one will not come cheap. Let us spend our new money wisely, that we may have more money tomorrow. And let us use some of this new money to make life immediately better for everyone in town. It's hard to convince new businesses to move here to help us revitalize the city when it looks like a dump. We need more workers hired for the express purpose to keep the city's public areas clean. It is incredibly disheartening to see a sidewalk, median or park cleaned one day only to have it trashed again the next. Convince the citizens their taxes are collected for the common good. Set these new employees free to look for problems. Don't keep them restricted to responding only to complaints. Let them find trouble that it may be addressed immediately. And expand upon this effort. Hire more homeless liaison officers, add more code enforcement, build a more visible presence that we may all know our interests are being met. Certainly, there are many, many needs within the city which these new funds must and will address, some of which the general public may never physically see. But politics, indeed human interaction, is dependent on perception and eternally driven by optics. Let us create a new reality wherein the immediate takes precedence and we are all left feeling the world has become a better place, not so much a dump anymore. the world has become a better place, not so much a dump anymore. Thank you much.
Our next speaker is Terry Rains.
Congratulations to everyone on the team who worked so hard to organize the TEP parade. Great job, some feedback, please start the parade on time and decrease the distance between entries to lessen the lulls. And some participants handed out advertising, which was prohibited. I laughed when I saw the crowd size of Amy's Civic Center flag raising on the 7th, 12 people, woo! The resources wasted by your political grandstanding, Amy, is atrocious. You accosting me outside before the last meeting to tell me how horrible the mayor was for calling me a sore loser from the dais, true, was rich. Pot calling the kettle black, Amy, you are the queen of violating law and calling me names from the dais, thief, bully. I don't need anyone to defend me, but certainly not you, Amy. City Attorney Bettenhausen accosted me in the parking lot after the meeting to tell me that he had handled the incident of Nam Quan playing that outlandish five-minute evidentiary video on January 10th, which violated numerous laws. The time and place to handle it, Christian, was to stop it right when it started. I don't give a crap what you did after the fact, the damage was done. Speaking of Christian, who is not a constitutional law or civil rights attorney, not a judge, and certainly not a Supreme Court Justice, he is hell-bent on protecting government officials' First Amendment rights, but not those of private citizens. The First Amendment includes, quote, "the right to petition the government for a redress of grievances," unquote. Fun fact, elected officials are the government. He allowed the mayor to campaign at City Hall. He allows council members to attack, intimidate, and defame members of the public from the dais, violating the First Amendment, Brown Act, and more. If he opines a council member violated law and they challenge him on it, he wusses out and reverses his legal opinion. Remember this, Christian? Quote, "If anyone else were to do something similar, use and modify the city logo, it would be proper to notify that person that their use of the logo is not allowed, out of concern that it may give people the impression that users' actions or statements represent the official action of the city." So the same reasoning would need to be applied here, unless the use in this particular case, Amy, was authorized by the clerk of City Council or City Manager set forth in the code. It would be proper to notify the individual that their use of the logo is not allowed under our code, unquote. Amy squawked, so he sent it to another attorney, and I got blamed for that cost. More recently, future Garden Grove mayoral candidate Lan Kwakwun put up campaign signs in our city on private property for TEP parade exposure 286 days before the November election. No other candidate would dare do that in any other city. Heck, Wun wouldn't do it in his own city. Countless emails and phone calls later, Wun refused to take them down, claiming the laws cited were only to ensure sign removal after an election and don't specify which election or candidate the durational limits apply to, which is total crap, but Christian agreed with his case law citation. So, thanks, Christian. Now candidates from all over know that they can have their political signs up here in Westminster year-round. Government-created blight, thanks a lot. Oh, and Vice Mayor Ho, don't you dare try to re-resurrect putting that damn QT monument in Sid Goldstein Freedom Park or any other park here. If you do, there will be hell to pay, you can bank on that. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Kai Dao. And I don't see a mayor, so that concludes public comment.
All right, thank you very much. Again, thank you all that you stay into this moment here. The next item that we have is, um, comments from the City Council and agency members, including AB 1234 report. Let me first start with, uh, Councilmember West.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanna thank staff for working so hard for, uh, the TEP parade. You guys did a phenomenal job, thank you for pulling everything together, and your hard work does pay off, and it was bigger and better. That's correct, Christine. So, uh, thank you again. And, uh, you know, we have a lot of things that happened in this month, I just wanna recap also the success for the Vimis community. Uh, they are so proud of that yellow flag with the three red stripe, um, on, uh, at City Hall every year during the Luna New Year. And the reason for their excitement, as I meet them at the TEP parade and throughout the city, is that they said, "Thank you for fighting for that flag, it resemble freedom." And what they have suffered under a communist regime, a dictator, where they, their voice for silence and their speech, and not only that, their lives was even taken. Uh, so that's why it's so crucial for us to continue to defend freedom. And so tonight, uh, with that in mind, I wanna read the Bill Rights, uh, the First and Second Amendment. "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of the people peacefully to assemble and to petition the government for their grievances." And the Second Amendment is "a well-regulated militia, being necessary to secure, security of a free state. The right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." And it's so important to know and understand that the Second Amendments, uh, protects the First Amendment by ensuring that individuals have the right to defend their rights, including freedom of speech and assembly, against any potential threats, thereby safeguarding the principle of a free society. So with that in mind, it's so important for us, each individual Americans, to know our rights and to protect it and defend it. As this local government, we will continue to defend and protect your freedom of speech and freedom to bear arms. God bless you guys, may you guys have a great Valentine's Day tonight and this week, and we'll see you in the next council meeting.
Uh, Councilmember Menzo.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Whatever. Um, I just wanna thank, uh, staff, you know, um, some of the things that the community doesn't see, you know, we get out there and show up at the TEP parade and everything's organized and everything's running, but, you know, a lot of the community doesn't see that our staff, some of them there as early as 3:00, you know, before 4:00 AM, you know, and that, you know, it just goes to show you that dedication of our, the team that we have to, making sure that we do, they're doing the best possible job for the community and to, um, make sure that the event goes as smoothly as possible. So, um, I just wanna thank you all for braving, getting up early and braving the cold and working your butt off for the community. So thank you very much for all you do. It was, I had a really great time. Bigger and better, Christine, Carden, every year, thank you, Adolpho and everybody, the whole team. Riding on a float was really exciting, that was pretty cool. You know, getting out there and then for me to go through it twice is awesome. Uh, I think I handed out close to 200, uh, red envelopes to all the kids this year. And last year I ran out a little bit earlier, so that's why we got more. I wanna make sure that we had enough to make me, make it our way through the whole parade, so had a lot of fun, handing those out to the children, it was awesome. I was enjoying myself, my wife, my daughter joined us and they enjoyed themselves. We had just had a blast this year. And, um, and that was a time for, you can see the, uh, community coming together and, and enjoying one another's company and getting out there and smiling and just having a really good time, I think that's very special, so we're glad, we're lucky to have that, and lucky to have that we, um, I know there's some little bit, it has people, uh, questioning us, us doing it as a city, but we can tell the difference from past, from the years past, that it's, we're more united and it's, uh, a lot of the shenanigans are getting, taken out of there, so Mayor, and, uh, and I wanna publicly thank Jackie, because I think she's, if you know who Jackie is, she's, I was working her, her butt off too, she's running around making sure to do as much as she can, so make sure you, we thank her. Uh, so thank you, and it's, and hopefully, and happy Valentine's Day, everybody, and we'll see you next time.
All right, thank you. Next is Council, I mean Vice Mayor Ho.
Well, um, well, I also have, uh, want to thank staff. Tonight, we, we have to focus on thanking you for a job well done, you had the event, all of you, and you know who you are. I'd recommend that, um, you get together soon, uh, while it's still fresh on your mind, to talk about, you know, what you did right, and of course, what you would like to do better, and perhaps ideas come to you, uh, during the parade that you wanna share with others, because that's how we're gonna improve for next year. And that's what I love about hosting our own parade in our, our own town, um, is because we're able to, we're able to, um, you know, get together and make things better, uh, not have to rely on, on a third party to do it and then complain, and it's really been, and I know I was with staff in the early years, I heard, um, you know, back then, Diana Dobbert, she complained how hard it was to work with a, you know, third party. So I'm glad that, uh, this is our second year and it's even more successful than the first year. Um, and, you know, because it was kinda cold, uh, early morning, uh, we saw, you know, we saw less people, but then, you know, when the sun came out, we just, you know, it really filled, uh, the streets. So I'm very, very pleased. Um, and one thing that I'd like to also thank our, our staff, our city, for the float, gosh, uh, it brought back memories of when I used to have to go twice. Um, you know, for, the first time was the council, uh, council car, and then the second time was my own float, uh, for city, uh, for, uh, our company, Aperger International. So I thought, wow, you know, and so, uh, not only does it back, bring back memories, but it also, um, it, I know firsthand how much work it goes into designing a float and, you know, having these meetings and then making sure that you're thoughtful about who, where we're all standing, and so that's, you did it all. And it was amazing, it was a really, um, you know, the, uh, the dragon turned out really beautiful, and it was, uh, kind of a, one of the main attractions, people came and took pictures with it, and it's got our logo in the back, so it's really good advertisement for our city. So I thank you, thank you again. Um, one thing I'm not gonna say, that if I have my brother, I would, uh, I would say the one thing that I'd like to see changed is that we should have less MCs. We had five this year, and it's just like, you know, they were giggling as if they were, you know, it's just that, it just, I felt like it was too many, uh, you know, so I'm not sure who, I, I was sitting across, even after we finished the parade, I came around, I sat on the grandstand, just to, to see a little bit of chaos going on there, so I think that I'd like to see change for next year. But other than that, you know, it was great, thank you so much. And so, happy Valentine's Day, whatever's left of the day, thank you.
Just, uh, I want to respond to your, uh, about the MC. Uh, MC is supposed to be only four, but then, uh, because of, uh, miscommunication somehow that we are invited, already invited, but we didn't count it, then, uh, later on we have to include them.
Yeah, thank you.
In the process, but it's not going to be five MCs next year for sure.
Okay, thank you.
That's number one. Um, for me, uh, I wanted to take this time to thank you all residents, to be, you know, you still stay into this time. I appreciate for your time and appreciate for you being here and giving your input as, you know, with a positive comment, I would appreciate that very much, too, that that's how we build the community. Uh, I wanted to thank, uh, staff, uh, you know, taking the time, be, be patient with us, uh, as we go through the items. I have a few things that I wanted to say, but, uh, let me say this one first. I think as a community, as a, as a, um, as a council, we need to work together. It's, uh, seemed to me that I'm being stopped on the back and I don't like it. You know, in the front, it's really nice, you shake hand and everything, but in the back, you are going on air and you stop me on the back, and I don't think that is best for us to do so. I ask you, uh, Councilmember West, please stop it, okay? We passed the, uh, the, uh, the flag here, which, you know, for the, for the, um, stop to put it up, and you go out and put out the production for, you know, for your own advantage, and it is a separate, uh, it's a private, um, um, event. And here you are, you, you know, I can attend or I cannot attend, it's, it's me, because, you know, you are, you arrange the time and you expect me to be there, I can't be there. And, and as a matter of fact, all council members, except you, were there, and then you go on air and you badmouth about me and you say, said that I have to, to answer to the community, please stop doing that, please stop, I ask you to stop do, going on air and, and talk bad about our council. You know, let's talk about face-to-face and we can, we can iron out the problem. Uh, I don't appreciate that, so please stop. About the TEP event, um, I would appreciate it very much, uh, uh, for all the, for all the help. I do have, you know, uh, very, comment, uh, feedback, negative from, uh, feedback, but, uh, it's just minor. The thing that we did this year is huge success, uh, and I have to say that, you know, every effort that put out by staff, you know, from all departments, uh, including, um, the PDs, uh, Public Safety, uh, we did successful, uh, TEP event, uh, TEP parade, uh, and we have a lot of co, a lot of coverage, a lot of medias, uh, the main, mainstream media are out there to cover it, and also, of course, the Vimis media. By now, uh, you know, all over the world, I know that this event put the city of Westminster on the map. And with that, you know, like I mentioned earlier, we can go out and tell the people that, you know, see the Westminster, we, we do great and we, we are doing a lot of good things nowadays. Councilmember Menzo, uh, thank you for recommending, you know, over the budget, then we can share the budget, but I, I really appreciate for, for your thoughtful, you know, uh, but, uh, I can manage it, uh, this, normally I, I, I don't, but just because today is the Valentine Day, so I'll be nice about it, just kidding. So anyway, thank you for your thoughts, uh, but, uh, congratulations and hopefully that, you know, I'll, I'll be there, I'll be there for sure, uh, to join you guys. Um, so hopefully that we can all share, uh, the, um, the good things about the city of Westminster and convince the, uh, uh, the investor to invest in the city of Westminster. With that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
You know, I was stating facts, I wasn't talking about, uh, anything that's bad. So basically, I sent an invitation to everyone and department head, but you never respond back. Menzo did, and Nam Quang did, and Kimberly did talk to me.
Let me tell you.
But you didn't respond back, so therefore that's a state, a statement.
We need to be careful not to have a conversation here.
Okay.
I think we.
So when you accuse me of something, I just wanna bring facts, so thanks for bringing it to my attention, so I'm clarifying it.
Let me tell you, I didn't have that, that, uh, flyer until today, until today.
I sent it to everyone's email, you can check.
Anyway, this is, I am not gonna talk about it anymore, this is not the invitation, and I'm not going to, I didn't receive it until today, so.
It was in your email, I sent an invite to everyone. You guys have one week to respond. Everyone did.
Please.
Except for you.
Please.
So thank you.
Don't talk about it anymore, we are violating the Brown Act right now, okay?
You brought it up, I saw clarification.
Stop. All right, so with that, I will, um, yes.
May I have a brief response to what was said earlier? Because I wanna just clarify something legal. Yeah, oftentimes, um, the public raises issues and they don't, they don't understand what happens behind the scenes, but with respect to the, there was an issue that was raised regarding a, a political sign on private property. And I just wanna clarify that that was analyzed, I think I got that about a week before the event. Um, it was located on private property, the private property owner did not wanna have it moved. Under the First Amendment, um, we have a lot more power when it comes to the streets and our city property, and so we ban all signs equally. Political signs have the highest level of protection in the United States, as the Supreme Court has affirmed multiple times, and oftentimes we treat political signs with less protection. We put real estate signs up, we put garage sale signs, things of that nature, but political signs are supposed to have greater protection, and which means you have to have a compelling state interest in order to create a law that restricts it. So there's multiple cases, and I, I pointed this out, uh, behind the scenes to a couple, uh, individuals who were concerned about it. And it's, I'll just say, it's very difficult to respond to Ms. Rains, because if I do, she accuses me of, uh, accosting her in the parking lot or responding negatively, so I'm just. So I'm just saying, it would be better if you could, we could have a better dialogue over these things. I would be happy to share these things, but you're, I can't speak to you because you respond so negatively, no matter what I say. So I'll just point you to McGuire versus City of American Canyon, 2007, Witten versus City of Gladstone, and Antioch versus Candidate of Outdoor Graphics Service. All of those deal with these 90-day, 60-day restrictions on political signs, and they all come to the conclusion that although a number of cities put them on their books, say in the '70s or in the '60s, they're not enforceable, because political speech has such value. And so what I'm trying to do in, in saying that we can't enforce this, is we're, you know, we're trying to protect the people's right to say things. I get it that you may not like the candidate. I get it that it may not be even in our city, but the private property owner has a right to put up a Trump sign, a Biden sign.
That's right.
Any candidate that you may or may not like, it's a private property. And so in that sense, we have to abide by the law, and I want to make sure the city stays legal and not get into disputes. So I appreciate your thoughts, your concerns. I wish we could have a better dialogue over these kinds of issues as they arise. It's been very difficult to do that with you because of the nature of it. With respect to the other issue that you mentioned, there was a concern raised regarding abuse of a city, the city's code as a criminal violation. I, I was approached by this chief to opine on it. You have a copy of my email, which had my opinion, my initial opinion, very quickly. But I quickly turned around and realized, hold it, I'm giving an opinion concerning council, it's not appropriate for me to be the one to do that. So I, I said, get outside council to look at it. I didn't choose the council. I had no idea who did it until after opinion was rendered, and that's, that's what occurred. And that's the proper way. Whenever something happens, when someone raises a concern about a council member, it should be handled by someone else, because my opinion could be biased. And so that's not, that's appropriate. I just wanted to say that very briefly, because behind the scenes, I am trying to follow the law, trying to make sure that there isn't bias. And I appreciate your comments. Please continue to bring them, but let's have a good dialogue.
Thank you for your clarification on that. Thank you. At this time, I would like to adjourn the city council meeting, and our next regular council meeting is going to be on Wednesday, February 28, 2022, at 6:00 PM. Meeting adjourned.